I'd like to call the meeting to order for the June 12, 2018 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right. Are there any questions on the consent calendar by anyone up here? Any questions? I don't see any. So, going to move on. All right, we're going to our first bit of business and I am going to, out of abundance of caution, I have a family member involved in this industry and I'm going to recuse myself from the earthquake early warning information issue.
Okay. Staff, we have a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. Fire Chief Chip Duncan. And we are here to follow up on a request that Councilmember Muldoon made several months ago about an earthquake early warning system. And the short story on this was, you kind of caught us off-guard with something we had never even heard of. So I thought I was losing my touch as the fire chief stand plugged into the latest, greatest thing. So, I wasn't quite as put off when I got to LA County. The LA County Chief in charge of that fire station was going to visit the station the same day as us, and he was in the dark too. So I felt a lot better about that. So basically what happened was, the system you found out about, you heard about, actually was not through Los Angeles County Fire Department, it's actually through Universal City, the studio system. They have a very refined EOC system and a very robust emergency response system within that facility, and they're the ones who actually put that together. So, when we found out, we got the information, I assigned the task to follow up with Captain Tescorino, and Captain Tescorino will be the one giving the presentation this evening.
Excellent, thank you Chief. I just attended a networking event and it was one of the technology pieces being introduced, so I didn't take good notes. Sorry to send you on that hump. It sounds like you're in good company with the county being there too.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Kevin Tescorino, Fire Captain in the Training Division here at City Hall. And I was given the task by Fire Chief Duncan to conduct an analysis on the early earthquake warning system. Now, there's two components to the early earthquake warning system. It's the federal system called Shake Alert, and it's managed through the USGS, United States Geological Survey, and it's through the Department of Interior. And also, the second component to my analysis is the products by a company called Early This slide depicts the current active faults in the city of Newport Beach. As you can see, along the red dots, they are in our city and active, and just like anywhere in Southern California, we are prone to earthquakes at any given moment. So, the federal agency that manages Shake Alert is the USGS, and the system is called IPaaS, Integrated Public Alert Warning System. And as you can see down there, that slide, it depicts the evolution of how we are warned of emergencies. I can remember the earliest is when you're watching television and you start seeing the fuzzy blurry screen and the tones, and it tells you there's a weather, severe weather or some type of an emergency coming. Well, through technology, we've also evolved, and now we get alerts through our phones and callbacks through the cellphones or landlines. IPaaS is the modernization and integration of the nation's alert and warning infrastructure. So how does the system work? We have seismic readers that are strategically placed throughout California and the Pacific Northwest. According to the USGS, we are about 75% completed with the infrastructure. The main portion needs to be completed up in Oregon. The way it detects is an earthquake's going to happen, it reads the P waves. The seismic readers get the detection, sends the real-life data to FEMA and to companies such as Early Warning Labs, which is directly partnered with the USGS. At that moment, Warning Labs has a product that attaches to the apparatus stores in our fire stations. So it receives that real-time data, it can give a notification from 30 to 90 seconds in advance, and it will send an alert throughout our fire stations notifying the personnel that there's an earthquake incoming and the apparatus stores will open at the same time. This would allow us to be in a state of operational readiness post-earthquake, to respond to medical emergencies and fires at our schools, senior centers and hospitals without any type of delay. Early Warning Labs, this picture depicts the hardware that is attached to the public alerting system in the station, as well as connects to the apparatus stores. We took this picture during our visit of Fire Station 51, as Chief Duncan stated earlier. It is directly partnered with the USGS, and I did mention the cost. The initial cost for setup and installation is $2,500 per site, and $4,500 in annual cost, which includes software maintenance, service support, and the hardware needs to be replaced every five years. Early Warning Labs also has a product that can be attached to any type of public alerting system, such as City Hall, the Police Department, and it's integrated with the alerting system. It could also be given the countdown that an earthquake is about to happen. The early detection is scientifically proven. It is currently in operation in Mexico, Japan, China, Italy and Taiwan. President Trump did approve the completion of this system in the last budget, and as stated earlier, it is in the works. I do not have an exact date of when it will be completed, but it is in progress, and according to the USGS, it should be about 90% completed by the end of 2018. These are my references. I have direct contact with Mr. DeGroot from the USGS. He's been answering my phone calls, answered all of my questions, and been very helpful throughout the research process. We met with the owner of Early Warning Labs, Joshua Basheouam. I met him in Santa Monica and also at Station 51 at Universal City with Chief Duncan and Chief Boils. And we made a visit to LA County Fire Station 51, where we saw the product live and functional and how it worked. I also cited the two websites where I found my information. Before I go to questions, I put these three slides because we all remember the NAP earthquake, which happened not too long ago. But the picture down below, it depicts that gentleman looking through that crack in the street. But what happens is the BART system in San Francisco is attached to the alert system for early earthquake warning. And even though the earthquake happened around 3:30 in the morning, the computer systems were still up and active, and they received a 10-second warning that the earthquake was about to happen. So in the event that this was rush hour, where the BART system's working at full operational mode, they would have been able to slow down and come to a complete stop, preventing any type of derailment, saving lives. The next slide is the Mexico earthquake, which happened not that long ago. They received, I believe, up to 60 seconds of notification that an earthquake was incoming, which saved lives, and that earthquake as well. And with that, I would like to open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank, Mayor Protam.
Mr. Muldoon.
I think I'll go first because obviously, it was intriguing to me. The things that I was most interested in, and obviously it's nice that our first responders have an early notification. I'll ask your opinion on that, if you think that makes difference. But I thought having the apparatus, is that the correct term?
Yes, sir.
The apparatus doors open automatically so that the engines can get out was definitely something that made sense. And I also understand there's a component where you can synchronize lights so that traffic over bridges are stopped at the stoplights for a fixed period to make sure the bridge doesn't crumble or have compromised structure during the quake. And I don't know if you're able to look into that. So I guess those two questions are, your opinion on, does that affect the performance or ability to respond to our citizens? And then how about safety as it goes to traffic and potential infrastructure issues?
My opinion is, it would definitely make a difference if we were notified from a fire station standpoint. We would need some training and develop some type of policy to where if we did receive the alert, not only would the engineer have to pull out the apparatus, but anybody that's nearby, because you might have a few seconds. And the whole goal is to have our rigs in operational readiness, and it wouldn't collapse. So 100%, it would make a difference.
So, would you envision that there's a quake notification of a certain magnitude, and per training and standards procedure, firefighters would wake up if they're asleep or if they're awake during the day hours, immediately go into this reaction you just explained?
Yes, sir. It would be a different tone than a standard call, but even when we do get a tone for a medical aid or a fire, we are out the door within seconds. So it wouldn't be that much quicker than a medical aid, because we're always prompted in a state of readiness to get out as quick as possible.
Did you look at any opportunity for false alarms or how you would regulate, or did the technology perhaps guard against very minor quakes or false alarms, or do you know?
I do not, I did not, I did not get into that or find that in my analysis, but one of the limitations of the product is that it's, you're not going to get much of a notification if you're really close to the epicenter. So if, you know, we have the Newport Inglewood fault, and if it happened there, then we wouldn't have much of a notification. So that is one of the limitations of the product, and at the federal level as well.
Very good. And then, do you have, going back to the, thank you for answering those questions.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the traffic issue, did you have a chance to discuss the signal synchronization and?
I know it.
Okay.
No, sorry, I did not.
That's one that, we don't have too many large bridges here in Newport Beach, we never will. We're not going to be San Pedro, funny enough, although some think we are. So I don't envision that really being an issue for the few bridges we do have, but I'd be curious to see if we do decide to move forward, if that's something our traffic division can implement, as if it's your opinion that it's worthwhile. That's something I would be interested in.
Okay, so I'll look into it and get back to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we have any members of the public who would like to come up and speak?
Mayor Protam O'Neill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As we heard there just at the end of the presentation, in answer to Councilmember Muldoon's question, the system is not one that predicts earthquakes, but it tells you that an earthquake is in progress somewhere else, and the shaking from it is coming towards you. So it works best like if there was a major earthquake, say in Palm Springs, and we had warning that the shaking was coming towards us. But intuitively, you would guess that the most devastating damage in Newport Beach is going to arise from one of the faults that were right under us, and we would have essentially, as we heard, no warning of that. So if our concern is that the fire apparatus is able to get out of the stations, my concern, and I assume the Fire Department has considered this, is that our stations are built in such a way that if the doors jam, if this automatic operating is not going to open it, that they're built lightweight enough that the trucks are able to crash through them and get out anyway. Because I certainly can imagine that the building would distort or something, and the door would not be able to open in any way, and you'd have to run through it. So I hope they're built that way. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Perhaps you could answer how our doors are built?
Yes, sir. So, our roll-up doors in the apparatus bays in years past have been the ones that opened up roll-ups, but now we're going to the accordion fold, and those are less prone to getting stuck in any type of position. So we've, they've developed those doors, and we are implementing at Station 6, Station 5 and Station 7. We currently have those.
Station 5 is?
Well, when it gets?
CDM.
Built, yes, sir. I believe it.
Yeah. Go ahead, Chief.
So, kind of to follow up on that, one of the mechanisms in that system, there's actually, it's a pretty simple system. You look at the system that's in those, the thing looks like a cable converter box, and there's a wire that runs off. So our overhead doors, you can wire the overhead doors so that when that thing goes into alert, it automatically opens your roll-up doors so they don't get stuck. What Mr. Mosher was talking about, during the Northridge quake, Los Angeles City had several fire stations where their doors got stuck, and they had to actually use, we're not going to crash our fire engines out of the doors, those are expensive pieces of equipment, and that's, we don't do that. They had to use their tools and cut the doors to get out, and that's something we think about. So that's why our newer stations have those accordion bifold doors, they don't jam. But our older ones, if we would implement a system like this, there's actually a very simple mechanism to open the doors. It's just like one wire that goes to the door opener and it opens up. It's pretty simple. So that's another option we have with the system as well. That alert would open the doors for us too.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Are there any scenarios where the earthquake is far enough away that it gives us notice, but also not so far that there is not damage? So there is a benefit, as opposed to perhaps an earthquake where it happens right here, and there's no benefit to having this equipment?
I'd have to look at all the faults and go back and talk with the USGS specifically of the faults, but I can just think of the San Andreas Fault off the top of my head, and that's big enough to where it would impact us. But yeah, far away where we would, I believe we would receive a proper notification enough to where we would be able to pull out the apparatus. And if we were here at City Hall, I feel that we would get enough notification right now to get dug and covered, or even evacuate and go to a space of openness and safe refuge.
Forget it, I was under that impression as well, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. So let me just understand, this is US government technology. Would cities be getting licenses to operate, or is it necessary? I mean, we would just benefit from that, the government, the federal government's system?
There's no?
There's no cost to the city, in other words?
Oh, correct ma'am. It's a federal system, and we don't need any licenses to be part of it. The overall goal towards the end is to receive notification through our cellphones and through any type of technology at that moment, which is, it's called WIA, a Wireless Emergency Activation System. And it incorporates, if you read my paper, it's already outdated, even though I did it two months ago, but it was Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile and Sprint since merged. So now it's just three cellphone carriers. But according to the USGS, that technology is still not fine-tuned. It takes about three to seven seconds to enter that gateway of the Wireless Emergency Activation System. So, they're not there yet with the technology. But the system is a federal system. To use these products, we don't need a license. It's all ran under Early Warning Labs, who's partnered with the USGS directly with the government, FEMA.
So, maybe I missed this, but when would this be available? Or when will they activate it, I guess is the better term? Or is it activated now?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's in the budget, as you said, it's just been approved in the current federal budget. So how long will it take to activate?
The system is in place, if you go to ShakeAlert, I believe, dot com.
So it is ready to go?
Yes, and you'll, you get it on your, if you go on your desktop, you'll be able to see the, when the last time the earthquakes were happening. With regards to the system overall, it will be 90% completed by the end of 2018, and I received that reference information from the USGS.
Oh, very good. That's very interesting. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item up is our utility undergrounding. Staff, ready for this?
I have to excuse myself for business purposes, because it involves money spent on infrastructure for our wireless communications. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Thank you. Mark Fekoiwicz, our Deputy Director City Engineer, and Mike Sinicori, our Assistant City Engineer, are here today to give a presentation on the utility undergrounding projects.
Good afternoon. I'm going to go through some background slides for you and give you an update here, tag teaming with Mike Sinicori, to give you an update on these undergrounding projects. And we want to explain to you some of the hurdles that we've encountered, as well as some potential solutions. In terms of the presentation, this is the outline, but again, it's basically this background and some details about the costs and some next steps. And this is just a good reminder of kind of the, one of the goals of this photo of undergrounding, which is to remove these electrical wires. This happens to be in an alley. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike right now.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for taking the time with this issue. I know it's not the most exciting, but we have a lot of interested residents that would like to see this moving forward, and we have some delays to talk about. So, just quickly, and we wrote a lot of things down here for the benefit of folks that have never seen this before, so we're just going to skip through it. And this will be posted tomorrow for folks to look at if they want to. We actually have folks from Manhattan Beach looking at this presentation, because they're running into similar issues. So that said, 28 funding, again, that's for arterial scenic easements, things that the public, the general public would benefit. It's a funding source from Edison that they set aside from their rates, and that we get a turnback of somewhere between $200,000, $250,000 a year, every year, to go towards our arterial undergroundings. And again, I just mentioned, we've got up as high as $275,000. Our last year's allocation was about $200,000, and right now, we have a combined credit of about $2.9 million in 28 credits that are ours. And just, again, for the council members that know this, if we do have $200,000 a year, we can five-year mortgage our funds and get to, right now, we've got a $3.9 million project, you know, in terms of funding. Remember that number. Some of the 28 projects we've done over several, several years, decades actually, you know, we've done Coast Highway, we've done McFadden Plaza, I think the last project we did was down on Bayside Drive. It's hard to see on the image. The project we're talking about here today is the Balboa Boulevard project from essentially Coast Highway down to the Newport Pier. The Rule 20 projects, again, just to remind folks, they're resident-driven projects, their residents form petitions, they come to us and say, "We'd like to underground our neighborhood, we want to pay for this." They have to go through a laborious process to get there. These 20B projects, you actually have a credit from Edison, what we call our equivalent overhead credit. That's why the 20B projects are attractive, is they give back the cost of what they would have to build a new system in the air towards the resident-driven projects. Historically, these have ranged from $10,000 to $25,000. You know, for instance, the 111 project, they were in the $15,000 range, and the ones in Corona del Mar were $21,000, $22,000. We've had a great success with projects. We've gone through this many, many, many times with Edison. Early 2000s, we had just a laundry list of projects that were done successfully, mostly on the peninsula. This is a list of those projects. Some of the difficult ones, we had the one done in Bay Shores, it was in a private streets, and we worked in concert with that community and had their streets all completely redone in concert with the undergrounding. We do the same thing with our alleys and our streets when we do the projects. So, it's been a great effort, and the list here goes back to Little Balboa Island in 2000, when that, I think, was started or completed. The current projects we're looking at, that we have, that are actually voted in, approved by the residents, and they're waiting patiently for these projects to start construction. All of these should have started construction last fall. 111's down by the Newport Pier, 116, 116B are up closer to Coast Highway on the peninsula, and then 117 in Corona del Mar, between Carnation and Avocado essentially. Many, many homeowners are calling on a regular basis, what's the status? They're in escrows, they're transferring properties. It's a non-stop conversation we're having about these districts, and unfortunately, the delays. Boundary of 117, this project, we actually have some really good news. The boundary that I just talked about, Avocado over to Carnation, I'll just slip through this. We got the numbers from Edison in the fall, where the, where the project actually was a $4.5 million project voted in by the residents. The construction cost alone within that envelope of funds was $3.8 million that we had to work with to get the project built. And if you recall, we switched processes here a little bit. We voted on an estimate, and hoping we would come in with bids a year or two later after we designed it and put it out to bid. Unfortunately, Edison came back with a construction cost of $5.9 million. So we were significantly over budget in the fall, and we tried working with that, tried to get that number down. We ultimately took the project over and have rebid this, and we are coming back at the next council meeting. Very proud that we are going to be able to award a construction contract and get this project back within budget, and we are going to start assuming council approval in July with construction. 10-month delay, but we're going to make it.
Ms. Dixon, excuse me, sorry.
I just want to, oh, thank you. Thank you. I just want to put a fine point on your statement. So, we are not, we rebidded this project, the Corona del Mar project, the Edison portion of it, so it's the infrastructure build to an alternative source to Edison, and this alternative source has come in to work directly with the city as a subcontractor to the city, and they could come in on, under, or on budget versus the, at $3.8 million versus the $5.9 that Edison had bid. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we will be bringing back a full staff report. Our $3.8 million number, it's actually less than that. We've got some continued, we have to manage, we have to manage this project. So, we have about $300,000 in contract staff to support us in getting this built, and we'll bring that all forward here on the 26th of June.
So, is this the first time that the city, or any city, has bid separately from Edison to do residential undergrounding?
Councilmember Dixon, no. Actually, Laguna Beach has continually built projects on their own, the 20B projects. And they exclusively do it, bid it, manage it, and get it done. Just to give you a little, since we're talking about this, Edison had unfortunately only four contractors bid this project in the fall. We went way out of our way to find contractors. We outreach to 25 different firms. 17 contractors actively were reviewing this project during bidding, 13 bids came in. So, and we'll have all that information in the staff report on the 26th, but having that much activity got this number down significantly.
So, as you continue on your presentation, we're going to be showing that we can do this ourselves, and as far as the Corona del Mar project is, it's back on schedule after this little hiccup. We can proceed forward. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Well, I, I'll say this many times, I want to thank Councilmember Pieter for driving this outside outsourcing model, and I'm very pleased that we were able to do it and deliver for the residents. So please proceed. Thank you.
Well, I will give fair warning, one more note. This is, this is a low-bid contractor, and it's going to be probably a little painful for us going through this first project. So, the patience, please, with the residents from Corona del Mar. We're going to do the best we can, and we'll be right on it, but it is our first project.
But we do have four others on the peninsula that are waiting in line patiently, extremely patiently. All right, thank you.
We're going to get to those right now. So the schedule on the Peninsula 20Bs, we presented this at the time these three districts were approved, 111, 116, 116B. You know, they've been working hard at this for a lot of years. It started in 2014, the notice of intents were done in '15, and they actually had their district approved in January of '16 to move those three districts forward. They too were expecting construction here in the fall, and you see where the little red arrow is, that's where we are, or should I say where we're stalled? Because we're working on some problems with the districts, which we'll talk about here shortly. Just to remind council where these areas are, the pink area shown on Balboa Boulevard, that's our 28 project. That's the one that, we have the $3.9 million in the bank, ready to go. The yellow area is 116B, and the green area is 116. Just the pictures show sort of what we have out there. And then down near the pier, this is our 111 area, the blue is the 111 area, and the pink's the Balboa Boulevard project again. These are intertwined. The point with these slides here is just show, the 28 is intertwined with the 20B. The circuits all go in and out of each. So they're really together as one project, and that's an important note that we'll talk about further. I don't, I won't read all this, but the cost, the bids came in on January 2nd, and just the bottom line is, every one of them is over budget, to the tune of about $2.3 million over the assessments that the residents have collected. So 111, I'm not going to read these numbers, let me just move on. The Balboa Boulevard 28 undergrounding status, again, we had a project based on about a $4.1 million estimate that Edison had put together for us. That's what we were working on when council- on when council approved this in 2013. Once the 20Bs were initiated in January of '16, we had to go back to council, adjust the boundaries, work together with Edison, again, changing the project a little bit. But still, it was a $4 million project. Our numbers from Edison, which is, it's hard to swallow this, so, it just was shocking. We got a number originally in March of $5.9 million. That's what the project came in at. So, we were $1.8 million over our budget. We were thinking maybe we could figure out some ways to stretch our funds and get it there, working on all sorts of creative ideas. And then all of a sudden, in April, we received another note from Edison, and that, what was the $4.1 million project, went all the way up to 8.6. So, we were significantly over budget on the 28 project. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark just for a few slides about the process with Edison.
Okay, thank you, Mike. So, those are some of the nuts and bolts of the numbers and the bid. And just so you know, the bid, the bid numbers are all in cost. So, it's not exactly Edison's cost. It includes the cost for the other utilities, AT&amp;T, cable, you know, and some of the other costs. So, just so we can compare line items. But the process here is, is very challenging, and we're going to be very frank with you about some of our challenges here. And we're going to present you some solutions as well, too. So, but, you know, Edison, in an individual basis, you know, from a management basis, you know, in terms of their core values, are very respectful. We like meeting with them. They seem very team-oriented and trying to accomplish goals. But a frustration point for us is that they're about confidentiality. When we want more information because we feel that we can help value engineer a scenario or save money, we cannot get the information out of them. It's confidential. And that is a, what I'm projecting here is a core value of theirs. And when that's coupled with the fact that they control the process almost every step of the way, it becomes very challenging. And just to kind of highlight that, too, you know, in their, you know, in their corporate documents and things like that, too, there's very specific wording there about confidentiality and proprietary information. And they are the expert, and, you know, we have to rely on them as the expert. But when it gets down to, we want more information so we can verify costs, so we can look at efficiencies, all the things that we do 101 of project management, when you're looking at how to deliver something efficiently and cost-effectively, something that we do when all of our projects, we can't get to that number. And so, we're asked to just trust them. This is the number. So, here's what we think we know in terms of the cost overruns. And I say think because we don't know. Again, we can't see it, you know. We have seen some information that, that say that the design is somewhere around 30% of the cost. We know that their purchasing model, their mechanism is a very centralized purchasing. It's non-public bidding information, very limited pool of bidders. You know, very suspect is the fact that they receive bids on January 2nd. You can imagine contractors putting together bids over Christmas and New Year's and turning in a piece of paper on January 2nd. Maybe that's a good strategy. I've never seen or heard of that working. We believe that there are system upgrades in their plans. Now, that goes along with, when you do a project, you always need to bring it up to current standard. Fair enough. When you need to put in the new infrastructure, you got to make sure it's current to the standard, and that's the cost of doing business, as well as inflation, too. Inflation, construction inflation is happening on many of our projects. It's always a concern. We're always tracking it, too. Those are very fair and appropriate, you know, reasons for cost increases. We believe that they're charging an overhead loader of 42% as well, too. Again, we can't directly see this, but we have been told indirectly that there is a overhead factor of 42% that is added on their construction costs. And then that goes to the question, is overhead added potentially multiple times? Because if you're charging staff time to a project, and that staff has burden and overhead, and then you add overhead on top of that, is that overhead on top of overhead? Again, I don't know. And we can't get that, that direct response. And so, therefore, the cost effectiveness, the value engineering, the project management 101 tools that we use are unavailable to us. And I got two more slides, and if you would allow me, and then we can get to, get to the questions here. So, we've asked help from the Public Utilities Commission, too. And so, this is just some background. You know, this program started in 1967. But undergrounding has been on the Public Utility Commission radar as well, too. In fact, in 2016, they noted across the entire state of California, there's $1 billion worth of work that's been allocated but hasn't been constructed or started. So, that's been bothersome to them. So, in 2017, they initiated some rule changes for this program, including auditing of these 28 projects. Now, those audits are incomplete. They haven't been completed yet, so they're not available for us to look at. But, you know, I think it's just worth saying, in all the documentation that I've seen, all the discussions that we've had, too, Edison has successfully argued that its information is confidential, and the PUC has generally consented to that. In the meantime, again, we've asked the CPUC to help us. We actually have our government liaison who's attending today's meeting, too, and she's very interested in speaking to council tonight, too. And in the last six weeks that we've been speaking with Edison and the PUC, too, there's been a lot more collaboration in trying to find solutions to these problems, because we're over budget, and we have a commitment to the community to deliver, and that's where we need to go. And here's my last slide here, too, in terms of steps and options. I think, as Mike explained, with the Corona del Mar District, 117, if the city were to bid that project, or the success of the city bidding that project, we're able to deliver it much cheaper than Edison can. And that would be our recommendation for 111, 116, and 116B. Again, the challenge is, is that's intertwined with the 28 project, the Balboa Boulevard. So, how do we get Balboa Boulevard back into the box, too? And so, we've been working with Edison over the last month to redesign it and try to figure out what can be eliminated, what is a potential betterment that shouldn't be a part of the project. And then there's some options. Basically, chop off both ends. You know, there's an end over there by McFadden Plaza Court Street. There's an end over there, excuse me, between 22nd and 23rd. And maybe there's a whole gap in the middle of the project between 31st and 32nd Street that we leave up in the air, because those do not have the 20B projects tied to them. And then, we've been asking this question. We have not been able to get an answer on this yet, but can the city bid that project, too, and manage the construction? It seems to make very, it seems to make a lot of sense, right? Edison goes out to bid and hires a contractor to put in the conduits and the vaults. Well, why couldn't they hire us as a city to do it? We would just go out and bid it and get a contractor to do it and manage it. It hasn't been done before. There doesn't seem to be a reason not to, and so, we're pushing that issue, and we're hoping the PUC can help us with that, too. And we have Edison here today as well, too, and they're, they're here to answer some of those questions as well, too. Again, we have a good partnership, but I'd say we have a lot of frustration in that we know how to manage projects, but we can't manage it with a blindfold on. And that has to do with sharing of cost information. So, that's kind of where we're at. And if we were to leave this meeting with some of those recommendations secured, that would help us, you know, moving forward. And that concludes my presentation, and Mike and I and Dave are happy to answer some questions. And again, Edison and the PUC are here also for any questions.
Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on that question about the 22% overhead, what is your experience of what you would expect to see that overhead number be?
So, the overhead number from Edison is 42%. And, you know, in terms of what we manage our projects at, in terms of, you know, hiring consultants and to manage, it's somewhere in the 10% to 15% range.
So, okay, that's a significant difference. So, that difference is put on the backs of our residents and in the higher per-unit costs of their, of their participation in the assessment district program, right?
That's correct. If we choose that model of Edison building it, then, then those residents would be charged that 42%. Now, what's unknown is, on the Balboa Boulevard project, is Edison charging a 42% overhead on that, too? We don't know.
And we can't seem to find out. Let's talk about the 28. So, what you just said, just to clarify, put a fine point on what you said, you're working on a potential workaround where those residential areas can go right up to Balboa Boulevard. They could do the underground assessment, not be dependent upon the 28 project, and Edison could come along at some other time, option number one, and do it later. Or we could out, we could contract to do 28 ourselves, as well as each of those districts.
A little bit of both. So, Mike, can you pull up that map? So, the option is, is to skip a section down the middle.
Yes.
And here's, here's a map, if you can kind of visualize this here. So, you see the green and the yellow to the left. Again, it's a very big map. So, you underground that section to the left. You skip the section in the middle, and then you underground the section to the right. And then both corners, you chop off as well, too.
Well, wait, so the pink, would this city, you're proposing the city, the city do that 28 project?
Well, that's, that's what we would like as an option, because we think we could deliver it cheaper.
As well as do the undergrounding as well.
As well as the other private 20B projects.
Is, can we call up the Edison people?
Yeah. So, and that was 4.1 million, and now it's 8.6 million. So, it's a sizable amount to get, to reduce.
If the mayor would agree, I'd like, can we invite the Edison representative to ask the questions?
Well, sure.
Are they prepared to answer?
Would the Edison rep like to come up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tony Mathis with Edison. I'm a principal manager with Edison, responsible for project managing much of our distribution work across the territory. So, there's a lot of material here. I'm torn between not having had my own presentation to address this, and which questions to, to start helping to answer. So, can I ask, is there, because again, there's a number of issues here that I think warrant having some responses to. Can I ask you to help prioritize and get me started? What question do you have that you'd like answered first, perhaps?
Well, I'll just continue from my line of questioning is, why are Edison's costs so high, number one? And why is this rebidding process coming, why are we having to deal with, and our residents having to deal with this rebidding process? It's delaying, it's time delay and costing more. And I'll hold that, and then I'll let my colleagues go from there.
Specific, what we've been experiencing recently, we've been seeing an increase in our civil pricing. We competitively bid, as I think the city does when they have work. And we have absolutely seen an increase in the competitively bid prices from our contractors. We do have approved suppliers that we work with, that are qualified to do our work, and so on. I find it interesting that there's a much broader pool of bidders the city opted for, which I think is a good move. Makes sense. The more bidders you put in the pool, theoretically, you should get some better pricing. But we have absolutely seen an increase over the past 12 months to 18 months in the civil pricing. Specifically for the Balboa Boulevard project, there are two factors that have driven up our cost estimate. Number one, we, the final design accomplishes more undergrounding than we set out in the original estimate. Secondly, the cost for that work, the civil work, not the electrical, not the material, those costs are fairly stable. But the civil portion, the costs are significantly greater than what we would have expected and what was included in that original, that original estimate that we did several years ago. So, those two factors. The increase in trench, the increase in work, the city brought to our attention, they began to challenge the design, asked some questions. I think those were very good questions to ask. Come to find out that in our design, we do have, so one of the questions, the answer is, why are we designing more undergrounding than what was in the original estimate? The answer is, we do have some system betterments in the design, things that are needed to operationalize our system, to improve it, make it more reliable, et cetera. Our policy has been that those costs should not be passed on, on a 28 or 20B project. So, the planners that designed this work, that was their oversight. So, it is our policy and our practice to not charge betterments that are above and beyond what's necessary to perform the undergrounding. That is to be paid for under a more appropriate budget item, but not charged against the allocations or not charged to the 20B. So, although I absolutely recognize it was not the city's role to point this out, I appreciate their pointing it out, and we're working together to revise the design. And that will, will bring the amount of work down. So, that's part of the issue. Secondly, again, we're, we're seeing some high bids. I've checked with our counterparts up north and south, PG&E, San Diego, Gas and Electric. They are experiencing a similar issue with their projects. Now, there must be something inherently different about how we bid a project and the criteria and the requirements as compared to the city, if the city is bidding out the same work with the same requirements and getting lower prices. We need to look into that to find out why, because obvious reasons, we, it's not prudent to pay more for the same work. So, whether that means that we broaden our supplier pool, or some other factor, those are things that we need to look at. We absolutely will look at them. And then, lastly, I think there was a question, and perhaps not lastly, but thirdly, a question about the city bidding the 28 civil work. Our tariff with the commission allows for customer work, the 20Bs, that is, most of those costs are paid for by the customer, in this case, the city. The city has the option of doing the underground civil, providing us with the ducts and structures and manholes and so on, providing them to us. We come back, do the cabling, the electrical work. That option's been in the tariff, I believe, most likely since its inception in '68, for 50 years. The 28, which is paid for by our ratepayers, is Edison work. We have work credits that we issue the city, that Mark talked about a bit earlier in his presentation, that help us determine where we spend our budget. But it's Edison work paid for by our ratepayers, and the option to have the customer do the ducts and structures is not written in our tariff. So, for the first 50 years, we have not had that occur. If there is a good business reason, and it will result in lower costs, I think it's absolutely worth exploring. And we have the, this proceeding before the commission, the Rule 20 OIR, and that we can approach the commission staff and test the waters to see if something that, that might be something we might be able to do. I think that's a reasonable suggestion. So, I will take the action to pursue that with commission staff.
Did you answer the question about the 42% margin, profit margin, or overhead, whatever you call it?
Overheads are a cost of doing business. Any contractor has overheads. I'm sure the city has overheads. We have overheads. The overheads are used to pass on the cost of doing business that we can't specifically charge to a specific project. Those overheads are in our general rate case and approved by the Public Utilities Commission. They are the same rates that we charge to all of our capital work. So, we treat no customer differently. Trying to negotiate those rates with a customer to lower them means that we'd have to pass higher costs on to other customers, and that's not fair to our other customers. So, these are the same overhead rates that we charge to all of our capital work. And on distribution, we're doing about $2 billion a year plus in capital work. There's a lot of work, and there's a cost of doing business. So, the, the overhead rate, the 42%, is added to the civil bid when we go out for bid. And that is an estimate of what those actual overheads will be when the job is complete. So, it's, I don't see much flexibility, if any, on the overhead subject, because again, we have to be fair and equitable.
Mr. Piater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony, I appreciate your
Tony, I appreciate your coming up and getting grilled by us, not intending to cross-examine you, but we do want to put you on the spot. The 42% is a really high number. I know you're probably approved to do that. A solution, obviously, for us and be able to get it done cheaper is to allow at least the, the 20Bs to be done, which is allowed.
Absolutely agree.
At least the structures, the civil work. Is the 20A down Balboa with the amount of interaction that has to happen between the 20A and the 20B projects enough of a business reason to allow us to do that 20B project?
I think it is, and I do know that although we have not, I can't think of an instance where we have had a city or customer do the ducts and structures on a 20A. I do know that our neighbors up north and south, on an exception basis, when it makes good sense to do so, may have a city install the ducts and structures on an A. So essentially precedence has been set there. So as I said, I will take an action to, to pursue that and see if that isn't something that we might be able to do here on the Balboa project. It makes sense that, given the 20B projects that are so intertwined, if you will, and involved with the 20A, that they be packaged and perhaps bid concurrently. I mean, again, theoretically, we should get an economy of scale if you bid on a larger scope of work. So bundling that work with the 20Bs and bidding it out to a single contractor, I think definitely has some sense, definitely good sense and has merit.
So you have to chase that up the corporate ladder. Can you commit to us a timeframe that you might be able to get us an answer by?
Depends on the process we'll have to file, or the process we'll have to follow, I should say. I know timing is, is of the essence here.
I mean, if we had a go-ahead to do it, we can take the time and start bidding it while final processes from the Edison side have to happen.
Well.
We just need to know whether we get a thumbs up or thumbs down to do it.
I don't know if it's, it will take some time. When I say some time, I'm going to say it could possibly take four to six months. There's a regulatory process, an advice filing might be the way to go. There is time involved to put the filing together, file with the commission, have a review, get it on the calendar, et cetera, et cetera. So it could be four to six months. I will say, I don't know if that's necessarily a critical path, because given the design changes, the city proposed, we're evaluating, we are going to have to go back on the 20A and do some redesign. So we could be doing this in parallel with the redesign effort and not essentially hold up the entire project.
So the Balboa project's the 20B project, that doesn't need redesign, it's the 20A projects that need redesign?
I'm going to defer to.
Actually, council members, I'll jump in here. Every one of these projects, based on our, our circuitry review with Edison, and I, I have to thank Edison, they came to the table a couple of weeks ago with their, with their designers. We've actually hired an ex-Edison official to help us, which is, he's well-respected. His name's Tom Smith, lives on Balboa Island. Sitting down and going over these, I've learned a lot about Edison and a lot, a lot about their systems. I just think it makes good business sense for the residents as well as, as the 20A funding to relook at all these designs, and, and they are intertwined. They have to all be redesigned. It's probably going to take somewhere between six months, nine months to get this.
For the redesign?
For the redesign. There's a lot.
So the four to six months for the timeframe and getting approval on the 20B for us to do the civil work.
Would be in parallel.
Like you say, may not be, may not be a critical path.
Correct.
And we can't go out to bid until we have the redesign drawings. We don't have an estimate of what the redesign's going to look like.
That, that's correct.
That's correct.
And I think, Tony, I know one of the discussions that we had, too, if I could just add, too, is, is in terms of, you know, the rules for 20A projects, I don't believe there's any prohibition written that says that an agency or a customer can, cannot build those. That's probably why maybe some of the agencies to the north and south are doing that. And so I would, you know, just kind of really pursue that. Maybe it's almost just a note, an FYI to the commission as opposed to a formal proceeding to, to get that off at the pass, you know, sooner than later.
Correct. But the tariff is, is essentially silent. There's a written option on the 20Bs where you can, the city or the applicant can provide us with the substructure equipment or can pay Edison to do it. But that language is not written in the, on the A, so essentially, it's silent.
So the, the mainline projects are the As down Balboa Boulevard, and the inner neighborhood projects are the Bs, right?
That's correct.
I may have had that backwards.
One other comment on the overheads. Again, that option for the, the city to do the civil work has been in the tariff for some time. Again, Laguna Beach, I think, was mentioned, has been very successful in doing this. And the city will avoid Edison adding overheads if essentially the city is doing the work and is paying for it and providing us with the facilities, there's no overhead. So the costs are significantly less to the city as compared to having Edison do the work. I think that's a fantastic option for the city to take on, to help.
It's just one, one stop short of us having our, being our own electrical utility because Edison charges too much.
Well, the, the electrical, the cabling work, the electrical, the connections and the material pricing has been, there's been no significant changes in pricing on the electrical. The volatility has been in the market with the civil bidding. Now, there was a time going back about 10 years, eight years, back to 2008, 2010, you had a lot of hungry contractors out there, and you could get this work done a lot less expensively. Now, the market, I believe the market is saturated in terms of civil work. There are no hungry contractors, at least not the ones that, that were bidding. So we're not getting very attractive prices when it comes to competitive bidding.
Well, I appreciate your word here tonight to help us get that 20A project, something that we can do the civil work on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have one more here, Mr. Hurdman.
Tony, thank you for being here. One thing that, first of all, let me give you a little background. Before I sat on council, I was the chair of the Balboa Island Underground Committee. Okay, I'm talking seven, eight years ago. Our efforts to form a district on Balboa Island were met with a great deal of frustration when it came to Edison, especially in the area of transparency. This is either a city taxpayer funding that purchased, in the case of the peninsula, that purchased over 2 million 20A credits or 7 million of resident 20B funding that is going to pay for these districts on the peninsula. In today's age of transparency, customers, the customers have a right to know what they're paying for when they get an invoice from Edison. So what is it going to take to get this change for Edison? A meeting with the CEOs, with the board of directors? Cost information is not a matter of national security. It just isn't. And where is your corporate harm if you release your bid results and provide a breakdown of what is in your Edison invoicing?
We have a policy that the bid information is proprietary and confidential, and that is across the board within the company, even internally to those who may manage projects that don't necessarily have a need to know the entire bid list and the range of bids. The belief is that sharing the bid information can, if gotten into the hands of the contractors and others, could essentially discredit the competitive process. It could be a disadvantage down the road to further pricing. It could undermine certain bidders, et cetera, et cetera. So we treat the bid information as proprietary and confidential. Now, we did provide all of the requested information to our regulator, to the commission. It was asked for in a data response, or a data request. We provided the information under a label of being confidential and had a company officer prepare a declaration to justify the confidentiality. So if there's a change, I think, again, having a regulatory proceeding before the commission and also the subject of this project being reviewed by the commission, they have all the materials, we may have an opportunity for the commission to help rule and decide on whether or not that information should remain confidential. I, I would put that in the hands of our regulators.
I have quite a few other questions, if I may, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Do you have available to you the costs, the line items for these projects on the peninsula now? Are they available to you?
No, no, not at a detailed level, no.
If the city were to sign a non-disclosure agreement, can you give the city the results and the line item information when it is available?
And are we talking about the civil bid information?
Yeah.
We would need.
The cost of the project, the cost of the project.
Well, that information is in the hands of the commission right now.
On Balboa Island, we were approached by Edison recently for an overhead replacement system, new poles, new transformers, new wires. We have been interested for years in undergrounding on Balboa Island. The cost of the overhead replacement is approximately $4 million. We have been told that it is restricted funds and that it could not be applied to the cost of undergrounding. My question is, who labeled these funds restricted, number one? And number two, why cannot, why they, why can they not be applied to the cost of undergrounding?
I'm not sure, I'm not certain of the origin or the, the meaning of the term restricted.
Okay.
But it is an Edison-needed project to improve reliability and serve, serve load. That's one of our number-one obligations, of course. We don't intermingle or negotiate those, those type of trade-offs. I understand the philosophy of, gee, instead of investing $4 million in an overhead line, why don't we apply that to undergrounding and, and, and pay the net for the undergrounding? I understand the philosophy, but our, our budgets and rates and ability to do that, that, that doesn't, it's not appropriate. And one of the reasons I say that is on the Rule 20B, we already have a credit for building a brand-new overhead system. So if we go underground as a 20B, we will credit the cost of our estimate of doing the underground work, credit that with an offset of building a brand-new overhead system. So we're already getting or giving, if you will, that credit on a 20B. So to talk about also another credit, perhaps, I, I think the credit is there, maybe not to the degree, but there's a 20, roughly 20, it ranges from 15% to 25% depending upon the location and so on. But that credit's already applied to undergrounding.
Okay, well, I'm, okay, thank you. I'm not going to get into the weeds on that, but I just want to make a final comment. You, you can see our dilemma as, as far as financial stewards of the city.
Yes.
About transparency. We trust you as the experts, but we need to verify costs, and we have a very, very difficult time getting that out of Edison, historically and currently. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you, council member.
Well, sing no more.
Mayor Duffy, can I, can I ask one follow-up question, too? Tony, I know we were talking about this recently, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor. And in terms of the redesign, Tony, is there, is there a commitment yet from Edison in terms of the cost of the redesign, whether that would be on the 20A or directly on Edison? Because we were under the impression that that was going to be an Edison cost. Is that, is that correct?
Let me say this. The city has absolutely due a credit of a portion of our design cost, just by the nature of the fact that we have built into the design items that provide a benefit to the Edison system that should not have been incorporated and charged to the 20A project. So there will absolutely be a credit. How we calculate it, I'm not sure. A lot of this will depend on what that new design looks like in terms of how big it is, et cetera. But there will absolutely be a credit against the actual costs that go against your allocation for a portion of the design cost, whether that be a credit of the cost going forward or a credit of the cost that we've spent previously. We need to sit down and really kind of sharpen the pencil to see what makes sense. But philosophically, we absolutely will credit you for the design work that should not have been charged.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Correct? You're done?
I'm just going to ask.
Okay. Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, is it Mr. Mathis?
Mr. Mathis.
Thank you for coming in, and we're going to be opening up to public comment in a moment. So before you hear from our residents, perhaps, or they may be directing questions at you as well, what would you like to say to our residents in terms of the cost, the time delays and cost increases that we are not, unless we go outsource on our own on the 20B, which we intend to do in, in the Corona del Mar, we are really held hostage to Edison's pricing structure and time schedules and civil engineering schedules? What would you like to say to our residents?
These are very complicated projects, very complex projects in a lot of ways. We competitively bid the work. The civil work is, I will say, about 60% of the cost of the project. It's by far the lion's share. Most of the, the investment and dollars are tied up in putting in all that underground system. Cabling and electrical work and material to do that is a lesser amount. All of the work is competitively bid. So we competitively bid that civil. We have line construction contracts for the electrical that are also competitively bid, and we competitively bid them on, on fixed units. So the cost to install a foot of cable is X amount of dollars, the cost to install a transformer is X amount of dollars, et cetera. Those are competitively bid. Theoretically, if you're competitively bidding, you should draw competitive prices. What we're learning is maybe not so much. So we have a little work to do, but the process of competitive bidding has been something that we've stood behind for a number of years, but we need to reevaluate that. The fact that there are now schedule delays and extensions, I do apologize. I understand these are important projects. They're important to Edison. The relationship with Newport Beach is an important relationship. But I will also remind you that these, we view these projects, these conversions of overhead to underground as an aesthetic improvement, and they compete with our resources for electrical needs to increase reliability, bolster the system, strengthen the system, and serve customers. So it's difficult to balance the needs of those priorities with, frankly, sometimes an aesthetic project, although, again, I don't want to undermine the fact that it's very important to the city and to the residents. I understand that, but we have to find that balance. The fact that I think we're delaying the project at this point for good reason, I'm optimistic that we will be able to reduce the amount of undergrounding, which is going to drive the cost down. I don't want to toss a number out in terms of expectation, but I understand it will be, could be a fairly significant decrease in the cost, and that is to everyone's benefit. So while the delay is not welcomed, I think it will bring much better results.
Mayor Proton?
Sure. Just a couple of quick comments. It strikes me that this is, that it's much more than aesthetic, and I think that that would be clear if you, especially if you spoke to folks down Laguna Beach. I suspect that the folks up in Northern California that just got the report from Cal Fire would probably say it's a bit more than aesthetic. So I would push back on that, the use of that term, and so I'm, you know, it's a, it's a fair point by Councilmember Dixon. There's something that's broken in this process, clearly. I mean, the, the exponential increase that we've seen, that Mark Vekoevich said was astonishing. I, I think, I agree with him. So to the extent that there's something broken in the system and the, to the extent that folks from Manhattan Beach are watching this, it's probably a good idea to contact your state senator, because I think theirs is Ben Allen, ours is John Morlock. Might be worth asking them to get involved. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other speakers up here, I do have a quick comment. Could be a slight conflict of interest, but I would suggest putting a Duffy in every garage and the batteries easily. We've got over 1,000 amps. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. I'm not.
Mayor Duffy, can I make one, one additional comment, too? So, you know, my experience and having been the city engineer for the city of Anaheim, we did, and they, and they own their own electric utility as well.
we did, and they own their own electric utility as well, too. And during my tenure there, we did miles and miles of undergrounding work, too. And in fact, they have actually documented, to your point, Councilmember O'Neil, a reliability increase of somewhere between 20% and 30% on every single one of their undergrounding projects that they've done, just in terms of reliability. And their information, and again, I know Tony's explained, you know, in terms of the confidentiality, their information, you can find out down to the piece of electrical black tape how much they're paying for any single item, any of their bids, any of their information. What they have restrictions on is what's called critical information in terms of, you know, protecting national security interests, you know, from terrorism. But in terms of bid information, our experience and that of other public utilities has been that that transparency increases the benefit of the public by reduced costs and more competition. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And it's just, it's a difference in philosophy, I think, from a public agency standpoint. And that's why, and that's been my experience. Thank you.
Mr. Hurdman.
I kind of take issue with the aesthetics also, especially in the areas that we're talking about, undergrounding on Balboa Island, in the Flower Streets, Corona Del Mar, on the Peninsula. Our utility poles run down the alleys, our transformers are over homes, wires are over homes. Failure of any of those could cause considerable damage to a neighborhood in the form of a fire. There's definitely a safety aspect concerning the undergrounding of utilities in certain areas in our city, other than aesthetics. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Oops, here we go. Councilman Avery.
I just have a question for staff. So residents have already put up dollars for this, and time has gone by, costs have gone up. So whether, if the city gets into this, we've got management costs. What happens if costs are actually just more than anybody projects? Whether we go through Edison, whether we do private bidding, and then we've got our costs on top of it for managing, et cetera? What's the, what sort of would be the process there?
Councilman Avery, on the three on the Peninsula, we have collected some money from the residents. It's not been too much. We haven't done our second notice of assessment. But I'm confident with what we've seen on Corona Del Mar and with the, again, thank you to Tony and his staff, they've come in, we've sat down with them. I think with a redesign, we're going to be able to definitely afford the 20Bs. There may be some pieces that we need to leave in the air, which will be a council decision, which we leave in the air. For instance, Court Street down off McFadden, maybe between 22nd and 23rd, we leave in the air, right behind, I'll use Blacky's as the area. And then there's a piece, Mark said 31st to 32nd Street. It's actually 31st all the way to 36th Street, which is where the park is. And we could pull up the exhibit and show you. That alone's probably $1 million. So I think we're going to be able to get within the 20A box in terms of funding.
Just by value engineering.
I'm sorry?
Just by value engineering our way into it.
I think they, again, two weeks ago, they came in and said, Uncle, yes, we agree. And they're already in the redesign, even before this meeting, they've already started. So.
Thank you.
That's good to hear. Okay, finally, we would like to offer any comments to the public if they'd like to come up and speak on this item?
Good evening. I'm Bill Willis, reside at 107 Garnet on Balboa Island. I'm an Edison retiree. At the time, I was manager of distribution engineering. Tony's organization, I was responsible. One of my organizations was the operation of the underground design. I've been very frustrated by the process with Edison also. I don't understand it. Comment about engineering costs running 33%. Something is wrong. If I had seen engineering costs in excess of 4% to 5%, I would have said something amiss. Mentioned the total cost of underground system, about 60% of it's in substructures. The other 40% is in cable and wire and those types of things. About 5% of the project cost is actual crewmen hooking up wires and connections. And to have a 30% engineering cost, it doesn't fit. I think maybe you've made some progress tonight about having the opportunity to bid the 20A projects. But I think another area that, I'm not sure if tonight's the way it can be done, but something needs to be done with Edison, to allow this city to manage the own engineering process. It seems strange that today, cities' overheads cost, which we all think government overheads are absorbent, is less than Edison's. It would seem if Edison would just allow the city to manage the design project in total, it would save a lot of money. Edison, right now, I believe, just contracts with two or three engineering companies to do the design. I believe the city could do it also and probably at lower costs. How that gets accomplished, I don't know, but I think the city should have an interest in pursuing that in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, Brian Ozanian. Having been a contractor since 1978, I can tell you the most coveted item in a bid is protection of your overhead, protection meaning disclosure. All kinds of things get lumped into that. So the fact that he can't tell you what's in the 42% other than maybe historical data is a coveted possession of the contractor. I would resist to the mat not to disclose that. I understand why they're not doing it. But I have to commend the city to bid this out directly. What you've just done is hold them accountable. And you've shown everybody that you, you know, there are avenues to save money here and do it on a competitive basis. That's the American way. So I love it that you've done this separately. Having gone through five stages of federal auditing on the Alaskan Pipeline as a senior scheduling and cost engineer, I can tell you, ratepayers have rights to know their actual costs. If they don't want to give it, you have an obligation to the ratepayers of the city to do it in the most cost-effective way. And I like the way you're going. I think it's terrific. But to have secrecy and just have maybe four bidders on your pool to do competitive bidding, all of those bidders know that they're going to get one out of so many projects. It's a closed bid system. If they had 20, that would be different. They'd put it out for public bid. But you've done that in your research while serving our community, and I appreciate that. You've just uncovered something that's very important to ratepayers. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. I heard no other comments up here. My last comment would be, I would, no one's talked about, I joked about it, but the technology that's going to come on the next 10, 15 years, it's here now, as you've heard. Ian Musk has got solar, and he's got inverters and lithium batteries and things. I'm very encouraged that there will be a day. We'll always need Edison in many, many ways, industry and manufacturing and such. But in our homes, I can assure you that the direction that it's headed is we will be in charge of our own power systems at home. And it's being done now. There's, it's expensive. A lot of the homes, some of the homes in Newport Coast have adopted this. And so the good news on that is, you know, at some point, we will be managing our own power, and it most likely, in a lot of ways, will be your electric car in your garage. Having said that, you can laugh at me now. It's okay to laugh at me. I can take it. But we have another, one more comment from Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. So on behalf of the residents, I'm very, and the residents of my district and Corona Del Mar and the city, I appreciate bringing visibility and transparency to this process. When I started getting involved in underground assessment and understanding it from zero knowledge to a lot more in the last four years, I commend Mr. Willis and Mr. Ozanian's point that just bringing sunshine into this competitive process with the monopoly that Edison is, and I'm not saying that in a pejorative way, it is what it is, but we really need to understand how we best serve our residents. So I commend staff to really be moving forward on this. In fact, on our agenda in the open, the regular meeting this evening, I think we have three contract proposed bids that we are going to be voting on that would start our private, our public-private contracting bid going, process going forward for Corona Del Mar. So we are already moving in that direction. If I just may, staff, one final question to communicate to our residents. What, based on what we heard tonight, can you kind of just sift through it? What can we tell them regarding timing on Corona Del Mar? I think it's moving forward, so that's good news. On Balboa Peninsula, what's the worst-case scenario?
I'll start with best-case scenario, Councilmember Dixon. I think best-case scenario, if we can get the redesign on the Balboa Boulevard 20A project done quickly and splitting it up into two pieces, I think the area up by the highway in the 116, 116B area, we could break ground in February. Best-case scenario. Reality, probably September of next year, September 19.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you, guys. Good job. It's not easy. I'll wait a second for it to settle down. And I have to recuse myself anyway, so I'll let Mayor Protem O'Neil take over. I am recusing myself because of policy changes to the harbor.
And that's based on his business interests and source of income.
So Dave, we'll let, we'll let folks file out for a second moment. Okay, so we're going to be discussing the item SS4 Harbor Department. Mr. Kiff.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Thank you. This is a return presentation back to you with some modifications, and I'm going to explain those modifications and let you know that if you adopt the budget checklist tonight, which amends the city manager's proposed budget, these changes would be incorporated into that. In other words, the budget tonight with the checklist envisions these changes. So organization chart up before you. It shows a proposed harbor department with a harbor director, and then kind of three direct report functions there. And noticing some of those are kind of hard to read on the screen. The lightness of the box, the kind of the gray box versus the deep blue box, means that these are some, in this case, existing positions which have been moved a little bit. We already have Mr. Dennis Durgan as our harbor master. That harbor director role is a similar one. Right below that is a code enforcement supervisor, and that's Matt Cozy Lyon. And I'm proposing in this budget, it doesn't have a budgetary effect, but moving Matt over to the harbor for a year. I'm also proposing that the remaining positions there, the department assistant and the lead harbor services workers, be upped in hours but remain officially part-time positions, and that those folks can work as much as 35 hours a week. The lead harbor services worker side, you'd have probably two people that were out on the water more and one person that would be, this is kind of a catch-all job description, but one or more would specialize in managing the marina there at Marina Park. And I just need to delve very gently into the pool of job classifications, the arcane world of that. And again, to stress that in the city about probably nine years ago, maybe, sorry, not that long, probably six or seven years ago, we really tried to eliminate a lot of our one-off job descriptions and group them into categories. So you can be a lead harbor services worker, and you can have the same title as your colleague, but have some different specialties in that. And we tried to do that for a reason. And that is just, it helps us ban the salaries for those positions, among other things. So I just wanted to point that out. And then below that, up to 13 harbor services workers. And those hours can significantly vary depending on the direction of the harbor director and the lead harbor services workers. You see some dotted lines. You see the harbor director would report, in addition to the city manager, but report in just a consultative way to the harbor commission. And so would, if you shoot that line over, so would the harbor capital projects person. That is an existing full-time position that Chris Miller holds, which would stay in Public Works in this model, and there are a number of reasons to do that. Some of the duties that Chris's positions have would shift to the harbor department side, and I'll explain those in just a moment here in the next slide. Sorry, the slide after that. This is a little bit about the budget changes. You could see where the proposed expenditures would be 1.1 million, and the big reason for that is down here, where you see we're allocating a lot more hours, upwards of 3,000 more hours to this assignment. And that equates to basically the going from 16,000 to 19,000 hours. When we look at the business plan concept, this is certainly subject to the wishes of the city manager at the time and the harbor director. These are what we're proposing would be completed. We would focus more, this team would focus more on code enforcement, thus Matt's arrival over there, derelict vessels, liveaboards, marine activities permits. Those are lightly enforced right now. This would be a heavier enforcement of protocol. Public dock uses also somewhat lightly enforced. And then a training, all the part-time and full-time staff on code enforcement and citation ability. So Matt would use his year in part to do code enforcement himself, but to train the others as to how to do that, and that is a specialty type of training. Everyone would have to take the PC832 class, which we would arrange at our cost. They do it on the city's dime. Continue to do what they're doing, rewarding moorings. Lifeguards would take on an additional role with after our customer service. We're trying to avoid contacting the harbor patrol when we can. And you see a number of other items down there, which we believe the budget accommodates that. It'll be a different issue as to whether or not the harbor director and the team can manage all this. The year after that, continued revisions and refinements. I think the harbor commission is both looking at maps and charter operations, and that would be something that this department would assist with and implement. Along on the list is finalizing all the revisions to Title 17 that I think are needed. There's a light revision that's needed, just to change names, who's responsible, and then a much more detailed revision that involves practices. The next steps, I'll certainly welcome your questions after this, but if you were willing to walk down this path, you'd adopt the budget and the budget checklist. And then on the 26, we'd come back to you with amendments to Title 12, 2.12, to, which is our, basically where administrative departments are listed. To reflect the new department, we'd provide job descriptions and salary ranges as part of that action. And soon after that, we'd recruit for positions and work on amending the Title 17 to reflect the new roles and responsibilities of this harbor director, which is also, we're going to emphasize the term harbor master in, as a working title and the title that we would refer to this person. But in terms of the classification that I talked about earlier, it'd be the harbor director. I hate to be confusing about that, but our classes are confusing. I think that's what I had. I'm happy to answer any questions or dig a little deeper if you'd like.
I'll just note real quick, my system doesn't seem to be working very well, so I'm going to look over at Duffy's. All right, Ms. Dixon? No, 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 I mean, I can't, my, on my screen, I can't see who's buzzing in, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kiff. Just a couple of follow-up questions, if you could go back to the cost items and budget items. So we've talked in the last few weeks of looking at a three-year business plan, that this is, so could you put this in the context? What do you see in terms- What do you see in terms of next three-year period identifying these tasks as you have? And I, I think I believe I've seen, I have seen some major capital cost items, that fire, safety, boat, some other kind of capital items. Could you talk about those? So the three-year plan in terms of operating costs and capital spending over the next three years?
Certainly, Councilmember Dixon. And I really want to stress going in that this is going to be highly variable depending on your wishes as a council and the next city manager's wishes and the harbor director's wishes. Obviously, you control all that. So I think there is a path and a plan where you could, as a council, decide that you wanted this program to grow and start to take on fire suppression and start to take on maybe some type of law enforcement in partnership with our fire department and with our police department. Totally up to you. There's another plan, too, that says, continue to work on basically the two business years here, which, which to me are just kind of the basics of what this department, its core functions are today and could be for a long time to come. And then you would look at expenditures going, just generally going up by the cost of living. So I hope that answers your question. Again, it's wholly dependent on your wishes and that of the next city manager and harbor director.
Okay. So just to sum up what you've said in your presentation, just for clarity's sake, you're talking about no new headcount. You're kind of cobbling together from existing positions. So we're creating a new department with no new headcount. Am I saying that correctly?
It is doing that, yes, Councilmember Dixon.
No new headcount overall to the city, I should say.
Yeah, I do want to make it clear, though, there are a lot more hours being assigned to this.
Right, so there's a cost to that, and so there's a couple hundred thousand.
But we're, these are, and I'll back up a tiny bit. In, in recent years, I've always tried to keep a lid on headcount because I know that's, that's a key item for many councils. What, and then oftentimes, we would contract out services. In recent years, we're finding that sometimes it's cheaper to do it ourselves, especially if this is a new employee coming in under the, what we call the Peppera formula for PERS. So our Peppera employees are now growing in number, and they have, just for the public certification, they have a lesser pension benefit, and they also pay more for it. So when we do a comparable cost, we're finding that sometimes these are much more cost-effective than contract employees. At the same time, what I'm doing in increasing these hours, and I would authorize the harbor director to allow those people to work enough hours where they actually fall into the PERS system. I need to make that clear. And again, provided that they're Peppera employees, that's a fairly low-cost thing to do. And it, it also, our strategy to keep people out of PERS and work them, which is basically 960, and then 960 hours per year, and you're done, you got to take off the rest of the year, I think that is just bad service. So it works in some cases, but in a function like this, it's just not the right thing to do. But yes, they're not, they don't add to the full-time position count.
So creating a new-to-the-world for the city of Newport Beach, a harbor department, we're looking at a modest increase in cost due to additional work hours for part-time employees, but no new headcount, new-to-the-world headcount in Newport Beach.
New-to-the-world, correct. Again, we have some transfers over, specifically Matt.
Well, I want to just commend staff and commend you for cobbling this together in such a way that we could go into the budget that we'll be discussing later this evening with no additional headcount. So, and creating a new department that will serve our boating community and our mooring community and protect the residents and those who live on the boats and don't live on the boats, I think it's all a positive step forward. But we're creating something that's new to the world, out of whole cloth, for just a modest increase in cost. So I hope that that's correct, at least for the next three years. So, thank you.
Mr. Hurdman.
Dave, we have code enforcement issues all over this city. I understand the need for Matt to be transferred over and do training. However, what is code enforcement going to suffer with the absence of Matt?
I think code enforcement always has the opportunity to prioritize what it does. We have a good, strong, robust code enforcement team. I hearken back to when I started work here, we had one code enforcement officer. He was everything. He was a great guy and he worked hard, but that was a lot to do. So I think we're at four plus Matt, and they're, they're doing some good work. They'll continue to do good work. This allows, while Matt is in the new assignment, one or more of them to step up for four months or six months, depending on what Simone Jurge is wants to do, into an acting role and take on that supervisory responsibility. So I think we'll be okay. And again, that's a great thing for the council and the city manager to keep an eye on along with Simone.
Mr. Avery.
Thank you. I think for, for some of us, you know, on the face of it, it's, it's less than we'd like. You know, we started with, like, a lot of things, some, some great ideas, and, but the reality is the budget, where we are. I think this is really a great outcome. And even though it's less than some of us would like, which is the way deals work, I guess. But the thing that this gives us, of course, is the framework for moving forward and to learn and to adjust and to come up with gradually, just evolve into the right-sized harbor department. And I think that's really important. I don't see how we're making any kind of a mistake here in terms of, of the next year, which, and even beyond, with, with this framework and be able to, as the council dictates and we hear from staff, to add more or keep it the same, add a fireboat or not. And those positions under the harbor master, seems to me, there's a great deal of flexibility within those positions to, to do different things based on an individual's abilities at the time and for the harbor master to make those decisions. So all of that, I think, is, is really excellent. And as Ms. Dixon said, the main thing is it's a new-to-the-world harbor division in the city, which is, you know, which is a huge step forward for the harbor, the residents, all the boaters. And I'm very happy with, with the whole thing. And again, I commend you and staff because it's been a long process of working. And certainly, our harbor master, Dennis Durgan, who's really been a tremendous influence in pointing out what we needed to do here and where the issues were in the harbor that really, a lot of us had really no idea the depth of the issues. And so that is also part and parcel to developing, I think, this framework and going forward as we, we definitely can grow it and we need to grow revenue along with it to the harbor. So part of that's part and parcel to marine activities permits and just looking at the whole thing. And it, we know it produces a lot of income for the city, but not direct income, at least to the harbor. So hopefully, we can get to the point where it's producing more income to support the, a more robust harbor department than what we have now. And I really like the partnership with the lifeguards. I think that's a great way to go. And we're, I know the harbor master is working on our relationship with the sheriffs, and I think we're off to a great start with our new sheriff's lead and lieutenant there. And so we also have with contracts with vessel assist and other towing agencies. And so there's, we've got some partners, and I think it's important to grow those partnerships because that will help us keep our costs down, but more importantly, we'll deliver better services to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Mr. Kiff, thank you very much for your hard work and creative thinking on this item. I'm not as optimistic as you are about Peppera and it being spiked or altered at a later date, but I think, I understand your thinking. I respect it very much. And I really appreciate your, again, the time measure you put, not only to make the change but to educate us on the dais about what you're proposing. So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. We'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak?
Good evening, councilmembers. Alan Pyonsen, I live at 2270 Newport Boulevard at a project called The View on the harbor. And I came here to support the, the implementation of the new harbor department structure, mainly because I'm concerned about code enforcement. And I think this is a good way of hopefully getting the harbor to an area where we can control mainly during the summer, noise issues for the residents in, in all of the harbor. I have particular ones myself because I live next to a restaurant named Woody's Wharf. And during the summer, it's problematic, and we had kind of accepted that, knowing the area and living in the area for several years. However, the current structure without, I'm not saying with the harbor patrol, it's very confusing to get response when there are boaters and individuals that take advantage of noise. So I hope that having the harbor structure with a harbor director or harbor master and a code enforcement officer will go a great way in implementing more responsive times that we can control. And it's not the whole public. Everybody wants to have fun on the water, but hope control the few individuals that ruin it for all of us. Because it's very hard personally right now, in my experience, to get responses when it happens, that we get a bad seed. And I'm pointed out, and I'm sure you've heard this before, call the police, no, and they call, I call them, and they say, no, call the harbor patrol or the sheriff. And none of them show up. So it's very frustrating on that regard, but I just hope that this new structure that you hopefully will pass in the budget will go a long ways for improving that for all the residents on the harbor and for Newport. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I want to reiterate what I said the last time we were talking about the cost, $936,000. This started with $315,000 and change to come from the sheriff's department to the harbor master. Then it went to 936, and now we're at 1,100,001. I am concerned with bureaucratic creep. I'm concerned with the costs of that, but also, what are we getting ourselves into? I don't like being a naysayer because I think there's a lot of good. I talk to the harbor ma, the harbor department all the time now about speeding vessels. You know, I like what they do, but in the big picture, I am concerned with a lot of bureaucracy and how efficient will they be? I think you get tired of my emails. You may as well get ready for more because this is what's going to happen. And I brought a prop because I think it's important, and I want to address revenue. Where are we getting the money? So the revenue in the harbor, we're caretakers of the, of the, of the harbor for the state, state lands. But I remember once upon a time, we had something called this. And I'll turn it around. This changed the whole city council, didn't it? If you think back. What I don't want to have happen is, and I'll go to the mooring rate issue. It's, we pay 10 times more for the mooring than we do for the docks. This is unfinished business that has to be tended to. What I don't want to happen is that that excess unfair charged money goes to support this department. Because that is a separate issue that's unfair. There's disparity, and it's being, it's not being addressed. And it needs to be addressed, as well as being able to share in the revenue off of a mooring holder's mooring that they pay all the costs for. Like I suggested several times, a 50-50 relationship. So if this proceeds, I hope the unfair rates for moorings don't help fund it and that that issue can stand on its own and be fairly judged as excessive. I have a mooring, I have a dock. I pay 10 times more for my mooring than the dock. 10 times more. And I've given you all the information that it should be less than the dock, around 33 cents, and it needs to be addressed. So I don't want to see this funded from that excessive rate structure. I actually believe we should have a retro revision to those rates and give back the money. And the people that live aboard, they have a great time, but they're being charged too much. The people that have moorings that are empty help partner with up and down the state because people can come and guest moor. It's a great relationship. So these, these kinds of things are my concern, and this becoming a big, big department in the city funded by inappropriate rates kind of bothers me. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Any other, any other public comment? Moser.
Mayor Protam O'Neil and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. I just wanted to say I have trouble understanding the headcount problem, and it, it seems to me like a rather artificial constraint that you're putting on the city management. When we heard this thing three weeks ago, we heard a very similar proposal, and at that time, we were told that we were adding seven full-time employees, I believe, to, to the city's headcount. But we were told they were not really new full-time employees. They were actually something we called part-time employees, but they were actually working already as full-time employees. And I kind of think I heard the same thing this afternoon, that we have employees who are working 35 or more hours a week and we're calling them part-time, but they're, so that we don't change the headcount. I really don't understand what the difference is, whether we're honest and call them full-time employees or we're kind of sneaky and call them part-time, but they're actually working nearly 40 hours. I, it would make more sense to me if there was some advantage to the city to, doing that little sleight of hand, and I don't quite see what that is. And then my, my other concern is I would agree with the speaker that the stepping up of code enforcement is probably good for the benefit of the residents as far as noise problems and things like that. The derelict boat issue, I would say, no, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and there, that, that can devolve into a kind of what some people would see as harassment if, if allowed to go unchecked and to develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I know we have a couple offsets. Mr. Kiff, would you explain a couple offsets we have that are shifting to our harbor management?
Yeah, one key one is some of the management of, currently of Marina Park, which is a fairly expensive contract. And then I think the harbor director will be working with you folks and the city manager soon to see if maybe the Balboa Yacht Basin management contract should be moved over and/or accomplished by lead harbor services workers. So there's also, one good path is to, notwithstanding Mr. Ozonian's point, because it's a little different, and I respect his, his point, is what we charge for those guest moorings, that someone's coming in just for the har, just for the day or the weekend, and, and are we charging market rent? And could you, could you pull together those various sources of new funds as well as decreased expenditures and end up paying for a lot, if not all, of this? And I just make the point, too, this is a significantly increased level of service than two years ago. Service to the boating public and service to folks like the gentleman who's the resident of The View, where before, and I do hope that you'll see significant progress when you call and say there's a boater out there being loud or a party boat, that you'll get a response because the harbor director can manage the time such that some of his or her staff is working later during, say, Friday, Saturday evenings on the, on the harbor.
Thank you. And Brian, I don't think you got anything nice in exchange for the dock tax except for a new council, which I would argue was a good thing. But you do get something that's nice here with no increase to moorings or dock fees. That is very important to me. I share that concern. We've seen a large increase in our budget due to increased revenue and property taxes, thanks to the good economy. And I share your concern, so I tend to watch us closely, and that's why I had, I had a problem with the staff last time. I do think there is a difference between full-time and part-time because it's not necessarily the CalPRA system on its own that's caused us to have a large unfunded pension liability. It's sometimes when employees do to get a very high salary the last couple of years, sometimes being full-time versus part-time, the different benefits that come with make a very substantial difference. So I would argue it's, it's not fake full versus full-time, it's actual part-time versus full-time, Mr. Moser. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. And following up on Mr.
And following up on Mr. Muldoon's comments, I'm glad he clarified. To that point, just to clarify, Dave, my understanding is the $936,000, it's not incremental spend. It's already monies that are in our current allocation of spend. It's just being now aggregated into the harbor department.
Yes.
That's correct. So it's not new incremental spend?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, just to clarify, it is the steps that we took a year ago to bring Dennis on board and bring on the harbor services workers. That's all part of that cost.
Miss, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Sorry. If you were about to conclude, I wanted to thank some people that helped me work on this.
One more. Mr. Avery.
I wanted to just address the response times for, for everything in the harbor. And what reminded me of it was the gentleman's comment about response time for noise complaints by the Sheriff's Department. And I think in this process, and I'm on the harbor every single day. I work on the harbor and I play on the harbor on the weekends. So I'm well aware of the cycles, and there's very predictable cycles in the harbor. But it, one of the things about Newport Harbor is that it's a long harbor, and it takes a long time to get somewhere if you get a call. It's not like Avalon or Santa Barbara, or even some of the other harbors up and down the coast where you can kind of see the whole thing, and it's a short distance. And so I have always felt that the Harbor Department has never had enough boats on the water to adequately respond. And, and I know why, because it's really expensive to have a bunch of boats on the water. And so when there's a call that goes out and a boat is a mile and a half away, if they're going to respond to a noise complaint, they're, they're not going to speed to it. And by the time they get there, the whole thing has moved on. And that's been frustrated, frustrating for a lot of residents. My point is, is that it just, it is more evidence that we need more boats on the water. So this is what's going to happen. And so as Mr. Kiff said, this is, it's kind of a significant change in the number of hours. And so I think the community can expect more patrolling, more people on the water in partnership with the sheriffs. And I think, and the lifeguards, we're just going to put more on it. And I think that's really what our residents want. It's what our local boaters want and our visitors want because we all want a harbor that's relatively peaceful, that where the bad actors are dealt with in a, in a very appropriate way, just to let them know. Because a lot of people that come to our harbor don't really understand, they think maybe they're at the river. But they're not. They're on our harbor, and it's a residential community. And it's supposed to be fun, and 98% of the time, it's great. Everyone behaves themselves. But we need to be prepared to protect the residents and other users of the harbor from the people that are, are acting out, which is, increases certainly dramatically in the summer and goes away. So we need to really be able to staff up and have boats on the water in peak, peak times. So this is part and parcel of that. And I think it's absolutely important that we, everybody regards the sheriffs as partners, and hopefully they regard us as partners in this move. Because I think without that partnership, without that goodwill between the two operations, it'll be very hard to be successful for either one. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to thank a few people also, but Mr. Kiff, I'll defer to you and.
Why don't you say one more?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Well, and I'll just say that quickly. I just, I do want to thank a couple of people, and I, looking at Mr. Durgan out there. And we wouldn't be where we are today without Mr. Duffy's original concept of creating a subject matter discipline around our harbor management and bringing Mr. Durgan in just a year, not even 11 months ago. And to have created this out of whole cloth, to identify what the key areas are and the challenges are in our harbor, to echo Mr. Avery's comments, to make us a world-class small boat residential harbor. I just want to publicly thank Mr. Durgan for working the hours that you did to bring visibility and awareness to all of us of what, what we're trying to do out on the harbor. And so I really appreciate that. And certainly staff, Mr. Kiff and Carol Jacobs, how you've brought this forward. I think we should be really proud as a city. We are, we are a small boat harbor, recreational harbor, commercial harbor for the businesses that work on the harbor. And I think we're really going to have a wonderful framework for improving our operations and serving our visitors and businesses and residents. So kudos to all. So thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kiff.
So real, real quickly, and thank you. I want to thank the harbor commissioners that helped us kind of go through some of these ideas, and that was Dave Gerling, Paul Blank, and Bill Kenny. I also want to thank Carol, as Diane mentioned, Diane Dixon mentioned, as well as Dave Webb for caring, a lot of helping with the management. A sincere heartfelt thanks to Dennis Durgan, who I know will still be with us working on this. Dennis has his heart in this, and there's nothing quite like that. And that's a really, that was a really wonderful thing to have somebody start this off with Dennis's heart. And for a guy that almost, I don't think he ever had a weekend off, it's pretty tremendous. And then Mike, Matt Cozyline and Simone for allowing Matt to be over there. And then just our, our lifeguards for doing the after-hours stuff. And of course, the council members that helped worked on this with me, just to kind of kick around ideas. It's very much appreciated. I won't be here for it, but I'm really, I'm, this is one thing I'm going to look back on and see, see how it goes because it's, it's a pretty cool thing. And as noted, credit to Duffy for having this vision. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get the mayor back.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for filling in. All right. Next up are public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Anyone out there would like to speak?
Mayor Duffield, members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. Item 4B on the closed session agenda is notices instruction to a negotiator regarding the price and terms of payment of the old City Hall property at 3,300 Newport Boulevard. Coming in, I noticed in the lobby, a lot of last-minute correspondence that addressed to the city council, some of which is labeled item 28, but it actually has to do in part about this closed session. I hope the council members have had a chance to read that correspondence. One of them is a message from our city manager that says this is actually an item that he put on the agenda for you to hear, an offer being made for purchase of that site by the hotel owner, Mr. Olson. I would just like to suggest to you, the Brown Act allows you to meet in private for a negotiation, and I would, I would say that the negotiation really shouldn't be starting until the council has made a decision as to whether it's even interested in selling the property or not. And the discussion of the pros and cons of that should be happening at an open session of the council because many members of the public are interested in whether the property should be sold at all or not, as evidenced by the large volume of correspondence you received. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Just want to make you aware, 4th of July is coming. And last year, we had a lot of fireworks shot into the sky along the peninsula. And I talked to Mr. Durgan about it. Unfortunately, they quit at 11 o'clock, and the fireworks just get started about then, the illegal fireworks. So there is a very present fire danger on the peninsula. And hopefully, I'm sorry, Mr. Durgan left, we can get some staffing for that, for that event, you know, later in the night. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers that'd like to speak? All right, seeing none. I will, would like to now ask Mr. Harp, closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor Duffield. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss items 4A through D, including meeting with the city manager, Dave Kiff, Assistant City Manager, Carol Jacobs, Human Resources Director, Barbara Silvini, and Peter Brown to discuss labor negotiations with the unions listed on the agenda under item number 4A. The council will also be meeting with the city's real property negotiators, Dave Kiff, Simone Jurgis, and Lauren Whitlinger, to provide direction as to price and terms of payment related to negotiations with Robert D. Olson regarding the property located at 3,300 Newport Boulevard. The city council will meet to discuss the performance of the city attorney and city clerk. And finally, the city council will meet with Duffy Duffield to discuss labor negotiations with the city clerk and city attorney. The city attorney and city clerk will be recusing themselves from item 4D based on the possible personal financial effect of those negotiations. And my understanding is that Councilman Duffield, you'll be recusing yourself as well from an item?
Yes. Lido discussion.
Item 4, which is 4B, the real property negotiations based on the source of income. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are recessed until the 7:00 regular meeting. Thank you. But just hold tight, they'll be coming very quickly. Thanks. All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the June 12, 2018, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Yes, Mayor Duffield, there's one closed session report this evening in regards to agenda item 4B, which was the closed session item related to real property negotiations in the Lido House Hotel, which is located at 3,300 Newport Boulevard. The city council directed city staff to take no action. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, next up, we will now have our invocation by Bill Cunningham for His Church of Christ, Scientist Newport Beach, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Good evening. May I pause for a moment just to reflect? God, you are infinite. You sustain us all, and you bless us all. In the book of Isaiah, "I am your God. I will strengthen you; surely I will help you; surely I will uphold you with my righteous right hand." In the book of Hebrews, "The sun expresses the radiance of God's splendor and represents his very being, and he sustains everyone by his powerful word." And from Science and Health with Key to the Scriptures by Mary Baker Eddy, "To those leaning on the sustaining infinite, today is big with blessings. Tonight, let us lean on him, be sustained by him, and receive blessings from him." Amen.
Please place your hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, I'd like to offer up a little change on item number 28. I'd like to move, I'd like to discuss that before item 23 in the regular business. And now, Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Mr. Mayor, if I might ask for a quick clarification. I believe item 23 is the end of, oh, excuse me, never mind. Take it back.
Thank you. All right. And now's the time for city council announcements on non, these are non-discussion items, on new items council members would like to be introduced for future agendas. Mr. Avery.
I have none.
Mr. Piattar.
None.
Mrs. Dixon.
Are we doing announcements?
These are announcements, and anything you.
As well as future announcements. All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to do a couple announcements. The, this weekend, we have some arts and culture going on this evening. On behalf of the library and the arts community, I want to mention that the Newport Beach Art Exhibit, one of the two exciting events, this Saturday, the 16th, from 1:00 to 6:00 PM, will feature original artwork of hundreds of local and regional artists who will enter their best paintings, sculpture, photography, and mixed media. It's a great, great, great art festival, if you will, for art lovers and everyone else in the community. And it will be in the community room next door, across the breezeway there, and it will be a wonderful afternoon of special art events and for sale. Also, next Sunday, the first concert on the green, Sunday, June 17, at six, from 6:00 PM to 7:30, the 2018 Summer Series of Outdoor Concerts kicks off on Father's Day with Matt Mazer, Mazer in a celebration of the music of Frank Sinatra, a musical tribute. So it will be fun. And the summer reading program starts June 23 at the library. This year's theme is Reading Takes You Everywhere. Kids through sixth grade may participate in the children's program. So that's exciting cultural events. Also, tomorrow, Speak Up Newport is hosting a presentation on an update on Crystal Cove State Park. It's an update on its restoration of the cottages and the park. So far, the conservancy has completed two phases of restoration, represented a significant investment, and they are ready to begin phase three. So it's really, for all of you who are curious about Crystal Cove, it would be a great update session. And fourth, we have the Finance Committee. We'll be wrapping up some important Finance Committee agenda items on Thursday at 3:00 PM here at the Civic Center in the Crystal Cove Conference Room. Also, I just want to say, I attended, among other events in the last couple of weeks, the Wood and Boat Festival, which has grown to become, and I could think in its fourth year, one, just a great, great community event for a lot of reasons, because of the significance of the wooden boats and the boating world and boating community, but that the yacht clubs opened up their membership, the Balboa Yacht Club opens up their yacht club to the entire community, free to the community, and it's just a wonderful community gathering event to celebrate wood and boat. So thank you, Mayor. A lot going on.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
Just a couple of quick announcements. I did attend an Orange County Transportation Authority workshop on future transportation needs in our county. It was a morning well spent. I did it in preparation for an eventual update to our general plan, and I found the time very worthwhile. And then, very quickly, I'd just like to thank all of my colleagues, although it wasn't my parade, it was the Balboa Island Parade, annual parade that was held last Sunday. It was the 25th parade, so it was a silver anniversary parade. And every one of my colleagues participated in the parade, and I'd like to thank you for that. And I believe there's some pictures out there on the screen showing all of us in the parade. Fun morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
I'd like to thank the Balboa Island residents and volunteers who not only put the parade together, but also put up with the traffic and foot traffic as well. It was a great event, and it's always fun just playing that. I have no other statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Sure, I was able to attend the Newport Harbor High School Memorial Day, memorial that they do every year, and Sean Bolton and the folks over there have done such a great job. I also represented the city at the Newport Beach Chamber Athletic Awards. Again, It was a great event, and it's always fun just paying that. I have no other statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim O'Neill.
Sure, I was able to attend the Newport Harbor High School Memorial Day, Memorial, that they do every year, and Sean Bolton and the folks over there have done such a great job. I also represented the city at the Newport Beach Chamber Athletic Awards. Again, just like the academic awards, if you ever want to be just inspired about the future of our country, let alone the community, by all means, go just listen to the accomplishments these folks are making. Babo Island Parade, fantastic. Pretty sure my kids threw five pounds of candy. See if we can get 20 next year. The employee appreciation lunch that the Chamber puts on, that was so much fun. So I just want to say, we do appreciate all of our employees. Boys and Girls Club leadership, was able to attend that with Councilmember Muldoon. And again, one of those things, you just look out and you realize just how much good people are doing out in the community. Tomorrow night, there's the Orange County Veteran Advisory Council meeting, meeting in Newport Beach at the Newport Coast Community Center. And then, we have Irrelevant Week starting up, always a fun time in Newport Beach. And then, yep, that Concert on the Green, it's Father's Day. Wish a happy Father's Day to all of the fathers and soon-to-be fathers, including Councilmember Muldoon.
Thank you. All right. I have a couple, couple things. First off, we had our Second Annual Underwater Cleanup, which you would think, what are you talking about? Yeah, well, there's a lot of stuff in that bay of ours, and you can't see it. And we had over 100 volunteer divers on us last Saturday, Sunday. And at the Babo Bay Club, they put it on for us. And they, for all their hard work, we got them a hamburger, and we found all kinds of things. I think four or five boats, sunken small boats, and mostly shopping carts and various other things, lots of plastic bottles. But you basically go down underwater and you can't see the hand in front of your face. I don't know how these guys do that, but somehow they do, and we're going to continue on with this. This is second annual, this was a lot more efficient than the first annual, but not maybe as dramatic. The first annual, we found a gun, and so we didn't find a gun this time. Anyway, that, that was a good event. The Babo Island Parade, which was mentioned earlier, that's not my, it's hard for me to sit in the car and wave to people, but it was actually kind of fun, and throwing the candy was more fun than anything. And lastly, the 5K CDM was fabulous event, and I started that on a Saturday morning. And boy, there's a lot, a lot of participants in that. It has grown into be a huge, huge event for our city. So good job on that. All right, that's it. And so next up, we have matters which Council members have been asked to place on future agendas, and these matters are not up for discussion. This is just merely to see if three Council members would like to discuss the matters at a future date. So I'm going to ask for hands here. Do we have three Council members to bring back this item, which is Councilman Hurdman's consideration of bringing forth possible changes to residential leases at Beacon Bay? So do I, can I see a show of hands for that?
That was four, okay. So Councilmembers Hurdman, Muldoon, Pieter, and Mayor Duffield.
All right. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which Council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 21. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a Council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. If you recommend an action, there will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to ask Council at this time, do they have any items they'd like to pull from the consent calendar? So, Mr. Avery.
I have none, but I do have a conflict with item 23, Babo Crosswalks due to real property interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter. Dixon?
I'm not going to pull anything, but I do want to make a comment for the record on item number six regarding the resolution to renew the Corona Del Mar Business Improvement District. I support the continuation for the next year on their current agreement, but I would like that during the next 12 months that we work together with them to see if we can make some progress in changing to the new, the new 1994 agreement structure. Thank you. And I have no other comments.
Great. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
No, I don't wish to pull any items, but I do have a conflict or I do need to recuse myself from item 18 because of real property interests.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you. I have lodge and abstention, item number 14, due to my business and wireless cell medications, when it involves money spent for infrastructure. And I'd like to pull item 15, and that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Protim O'Neill.
Sorry, just for clarification, because I need to make the motion, an abstention or a recusal?
Thank you, sir. Recusal, yes.
Okay, thanks. I have none, and then, Mr. Kiff, just so I have it on mine, on item 16, and you've request, staff's requested a continuance?
That's correct. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I have none.
All right, and myself, I have to recuse on items three and 10.
All right. Hang on one second. Okay. Give me just a moment.
Actually, just one moment. I'd like to double-check something before you make the motion.
Okay.
Which ones do you And those are both related to Mr. Duffield's business interests and source of income.
Yes, thank you. And Mayor Protim, I have a conflict on item 18 due to real property interest. Correct? Mr. Harper? Thank you.
All right. Okay, let's see if I can do this. I move the ballot, I move approval of the consent calendar with items three and five and 10, recusals from the mayor.
And 15.
Oh, hang on, I'm not there yet. With item 14 showing a recusal from Mr. Muldoon, 15 being pulled by Mr. Muldoon, 16 being a staff continuance, 18 with a recusal from Councilmember Hurdman and Councilmember Muldoon, and item 23 with a recusal from Mr. Avery.
I'll second it.
All right, any comments? Seeing none, let's vote. I mean, public comments, sorry. All right. Are there any in the people in the public would like to comment on the consent calendar?
And just before we get there, item 23 is actually a public hearing item, so we'll make announcements for everybody at that time.
Yes, my name's John DeFrenza. I have been a board member at the pleasure of the council on the bid for the last three years. It comes to my end of my performance, which is item number five on the agenda. I don't need it to be pulled. I just wanted to make a matter of record or comment about thanking the council for my participation and review of the bid, and I am encouraged by the move to update and move forward to the next format of the 1994 format, that is, a program structure that I believe will allow better participation by individual restaurateurs. Currently, it's a very interesting program. Now, if you choose to pull the item from the agenda, and we can open, discuss it in public forum, that's fine. Otherwise, I'm willing to have a quick comment on this and leave it at bay. Or should I proceed? Just have the quick discussion. Thank you. Don't want to take too much time on it. Very simply, the bid has been working as a mandatory participation by every restaurant in the city of Newport Beach. That mandatory restaurant is a levy of a fee by the bid to every restaurant. This is above and beyond what the business license is that every business benefits in the city from. I understand the whole purpose is to try to generate an international presence in Newport Beach through advertising, but what lacks severely is the choice by the restaurateur to be part of it. The council makes the decision to give the $40,000 and to create the bid and to do this benevolent act, but it translates to a mandatory structured fee to each restaurant. This is how 1989's structure allows. Forcing the choice to the 1994 format requires the bid to get a vote. At least the opportunity to have the restaurateurs speak on the issue is the fundamental part that I contest. If we leave it as it's been, each restaurateur is demanded to task and to be part of this advertising program. I'm not demanded by Yelp to participate in their programs. I'm not demanded by delivery companies to be part of their task. Why is the Newport Beach Restaurant Association able, through the council's presence, able to demand my participation as a restaurateur in this approach? I thank you for listening. If you wish to pull it as a consent item, maybe it's best in the next discussion. I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. Of the consent calendar, I want to call your particular attention to item number eight, which is the calling of the November 6 election for four council seats. What I wanted to say about that, as I tried to say in writing, we have some problems with our elections in Newport Beach, one of which is that there are no runoffs, and the fact that there are no runoffs causes some people to be hesitant to put their name and nomination for the City Council, because putting their name in contention will dilute the vote and perhaps cause somebody that they don't want to be elected to be elected. I think that's an unfortunate situation, and I would hope at some point we could have a discussion of this item or some other item, of any alternative systems that we could have that would avoid that problem of vote splitting and strategic manipulations of that sort in, in the council elections. One of them I suggested to you is something called approval voting that would require no change to our ballot, but instead of selecting one person from each district, the voters could indicate all of the ones that they would be comfortable with being on the city council. And in that way, you have to think about it a little, how it would work. It would avoid that problem of the vote splitting, and there might be other ideas for that. I'm not sure why we're bound into the system that we have currently, and I do think it is a real problem that is worthy of a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Seeing none? All right, we have Muldoon pulling item 15, and I'm recused from that, so, Mr. Harper?
We still
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we need a vote on consent calendar.
Sorry.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items three and four. Ordinance number 2018-5, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Newport Beach Municipal Code, Chapter 17.35, relating to the prohibition of piers and floats in certain areas of Newport Harbor. Ordinance 2018-6, abolishing the Municipal Operations Department, adding the former General Services Division to the Public Works Department as a Municipal Operations Division, and creating the Utilities Department. Ordinance 2018-8, amending Sections 212.010, 212.080, and 212.100 of Chapter 2.12 of Title 2 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to the Utilities Department and Public Works Department. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, thank you. All right, item 15. Mr. Muldoon, I have to recuse myself.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. No need for a staff report on this item. Some of these items are great, like the Orange County Race for Cure, Ho Classic, Restaurant Week. They're pretty much generally available to the public at a reasonable price, and they bring a large benefit to the city. But Newport Beach Wine and Food Festival is an excellent event, and it's sort of become more elite, and I think it's time for us to cut us off, cut them off from public funds, and they should rely on their own success, which is quite large. And it's a little bit more of an exclusive event that I think can handle it. So I'm going to move staff item minus the allocation for Newport Beach Wine and Food Festival.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there discussion up at the dais or questions? No? All right, we'll go out to public comment. Public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any discussion? So, yep, I'll step in the role of mayor and clarify. So we would be voting on staff recommendation, removing out the allocation of money given to the Newport Beach, I'm sorry, what, Wine and Food Festival? I was about to reverse that. Are there any further questions? Any discussion?
That's like the motion?
That is the motion on the table that has been seconded. I'll give it a moment. Of course.
Well, I agree with the sentiment of Mr. Muldoon, and I do think the festival has become very successful. The $10,000, if I understand, and staff can correct me, is really the permit-related costs that the city would require of the festival, and so it's not, it's just to offset those costs. So what I would like, perhaps have a friendly amendment if they would accept grant, and then going forward, we cut them off. I just think that their planning, has the planning already begun on the October festival?
It has.
So I just feel badly cutting them off without any warning. We did not contribute to them last year.
Correct.
So they resurrected that this year. Mr. Muldoon, would you be willing to defer a year, you feel real strongly?
So where is it being held this year? Here at the Civic Center. If I recall the last time, the lawn got pretty damaged. So, and if they're going to use the lawn, that's what it's for, but I view it as an event that is very expensive to attend, it's elite, it's doing quite well. I don't think that they need a break the same way these other open-to-the-public charities do. I just think that now is the time to go ahead and wean them off, and they can use the facility like anyone else, but I don't think they should get a special break. So I'm going to say no respectfully and see how the vote goes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
With Councilmember Hurdman voting no, the motion carries 5-1.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
All right. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
Denise Oberman, good evening, mayor, council members. I submitted a note of comment to council on April 24. I didn't get any response, so I'm going to take this opportunity to speak. I understand that this council proclaims its support for property rights. I'm here to comment on the damage that's occurring to property integrity and values as a result of perpetual variances that are allowed to occur that degrade our residential neighborhood integrity and also inadequate controls administered by the building department in connection with residential development in our neighborhoods. Developers have learned how to play the game, so they've done such things as make subsequent changes after initial plan approval to plans and structures which have significant impact on the surrounding lots, parcels, and neighborhood, and frequently on the inherent integrity of the land that they're developed. So I'm going to shortcut my comments for this evening and just point out some of the damage that we're seeing in many residential areas of the city, in particular, in the coastal communities at large. How would you feel if you had such damage to your property in your home as loss of view, loss of natural light? What about taking of your property, cracking of your foundations, destruction of your yards and side backs, rendering of your property non-conforming? So I would ask the council, I know that the general plan decision has been to defer, but we've got some runaway practices that are going on in our planning and community development and building departments, which are having significant and adverse impact on the residential neighborhoods. So I have specific recommendations, which I'll submit at a later time, but this needs to be paid attention to when we ask for our policy decision so that this is not allowed to continue to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Although it is technically an agenda item, this seems the appropriate time to thank the city attorney for his closed session report, which was Roman numeral eight on the agenda. And it was very refreshing to hear a report that the action taken by the council was to take no action. It's very good for the public to know what you decided to do or not do in the closed sessions, and I hope that will be a new trend. In this particular case, the no action was not to sell the Lido House Hotel at this moment. The other non-agenda comment I wanted to make is to call your attention to the written non-agenda comment I made, which is about the city manager recruitment process, and to remind you of a point that had escaped me when we were discussing the contract with an outside recruiter, and that is your charter obligation to screen all of the qualified candidates who are available for the city manager position. And the contract that we signed inadvertently seems to be assigning a lot of that screening to the outside recruiter rather than happening with the city council. So I hope you do look at our city charter, and I hope that you do personally screen the candidates who are available and not let the recruiter do that for you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. I'm just going to ask in general to the dais up here, do any of you have committee activity reports? Seeing none. All right. We'll move on. I have none. To the next item, public hearings, a community development block grant. Does staff have a report? Do you... I guess so. Go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. This is our annual action plan for a CDPG item. We have with us our consultant that handles our CDPG block grant, Clint Whitehead, and Lauren Wooding-Witlinger, who's the project manager. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Clint because he does this every year, and he's our subject matter expert.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. This is the public hearing for the community development block grant that the city receives each year from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. For the upcoming fiscal year, the city will be receiving $358,000. It's up slightly a tick over last year with prior year resources that are available. We're at about $370,000 for this program. Each year, we issue a notice of funding availability. This year, we did that in January, reviewed applications in February, and published our draft action plan in May in preparation or anticipation for tonight's public hearing. This year, we have eight activities under the CDPG program. The first five are public services for senior citizens, fair housing services, services to prevent and address homelessness, as well as substance abuse. A couple of capital improvement activities, the first being the placeholder for a future activity. Due to the small nature, small amount of the grant, we did not identify a capital improvement project for this year, but will be making the scheduled Section 108 debt service payment and paying for compliance and reporting to HUD for the program. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer those.
I don't see any questions up here. All right. Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I have a question on page 3 of the item 22. So I've been listening to these community development block grant presentations. This is my fourth year, so I finally think I understand it, although it's not that complicated, I guess. But I understand that we get a block grant. The city receives an allocation from the federal government for approximately $360,000 a year, of which we are capped to a 15% grant cap for programs, and we've got some outstanding programs. I'm very supportive of those programs. We pay about $59,000, which is about 11% of that total amount for this gentleman to administer. I guess dealing with the federal government is very complex, and so we need to spend $60,000 a year to make sure we submit all the papers correctly. But the real purpose of the program is a capital project where we would allocate some of these funds to assist in the community redevelopment in some way. So we have these funds, and they're unallocated, so we have to pay back the loan, and we have now about $55,000, about $70,000 in the capital grants. So what... My long-winded question is, what happens to those funds? Do they just sit there? Do we have to return them to the federal government if they're unspent? We build them up to create a corpus that we can allocate to some worthy capital project? Should we... I guess here's the second part of my question. Should we have a goal? Do we have a goal in mind where we want to use these capital dollars to invest in our community, to improve our community? What should we be thinking about?
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon. The money is not programmed yet, and so it'll get rolled over to the next year. And we always find projects that we can allocate those funds to. So if we don't have enough money for a project this year, we may have money next year for a project. And so we just accumulate those funds until we have a project that we actually can spend the money on.
Well, okay. So to follow up, my understanding is with the very positive program that we invested in the Cove Affordable Living Complex down on Coast Highway, those funds that the city provided were accumulated over a period of time out of these block grant funds. Is that correct?
That was a different fund. That was our affordable housing fund. That wasn't CDPG funds.
Oh, wasn't part of this?
Correct.
All right. So could I ask, I will support this, but I would like to know what we're looking for to do, what we should be reserving these funds and carry over from year to year, because we spend $60,000 every year just to file these papers, and I really don't know what the plan is going forward. So that's my point. Can we... Does that make sense to have a plan? Have we targeted some capital improvements? We've got homeless issues going all around us. Is there any way we could use some of these funds for that?
So, Councilmember Dixon, we do have a five-year consolidated action plan that the council did look at, and I believe Clint, was that last year? It was in 2015. So we do have a five-year plan. We do this every five years, and typically, the plan is ADA improvements. That's really the plan from a project standpoint. We always have our programs, but our five-year plan is always looking at ADA enhancements. And if we go back and look at the Babloa Theater that the city council sold, those were CDPG funds. And so we programmed that for additional ADA improvements, which were typically curb cuts on street intersections. So typically, those are the type of projects that we look for. And I'll turn to Clint, and what other projects that are part of the action plan?
In addition to the debt service, we would have public services, human services, variety of... Really, under the CDPG program, there's a variety of housing, community, economic development activities that would be available for that $60-some thousand. Unfortunately, due to the small amount, the... Really, the cost to implement a project of that size wouldn't justify the investment. So typically, what the city has done in the past with that allocation is accumulated over a two- or three-year period, and then leverage that with other funding sources to do a larger, more impactful, either public facilities improvements project or look at other alternatives.
Well, I will go back and look at that five-year plan from a few years ago. I appreciate that. I do remember the ADA curb improvements. I know that that is still an unfinished capital project needed throughout the community, so I fully support that. So, okay. I'm not suggesting to be critical. I just want to know what we're doing. So thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
I recall, I just want to make sure I remember the funding source of this. There's a program that we have that benefits the seniors, low-income seniors in our community called Sharp. And I recall that was part of CDPG funding. Is it still part of CDPG funding, or do we have a different funding mechanism for that? That might be a Dave question.
That was also covered under the Affordable Housing Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more discussion up here, I'll take it out to the public. Like to... Anyone out there would like to speak on this item, please come up.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Looking at the same table on page 22-3, under the public services request the city received, I wonder if there could be an explanation of why one of the five organizations, the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Works, Orange County Housing Counselor Proposal, received no funding at all, whereas the other ones did? And then as to the capital project aspect of this, I pretty much had the same question reading this as Councilwoman Dixon had, since this is called the action plan, and we have here the money, and it says to be determined what the $55,000 will be spent on. Seemed like there was kind of an absence of a plan. The explanation on the next page is that the public works department didn't put forward any applications for the use of that money this year. And since the individual ADA improvements don't seem like that they're that big, I'm wondering if our plan is missing some coordination that it should have so that those monies can be used as they become available. And then finally, the big item there, the loan repayment. I hope we can get clarification. Isn't it true that that is just about to end? And if that does not affect the amount of the grant we get each year, in the next couple of years, we're going to have a great deal of money in this pot because the $178,000 won't need to go towards loan repayment. It will then go towards the capital improvements, and we definitely at that point need a plan for what we're going to do with them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
I move staff recommendation.
I second.
All right. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. Then we're going to move on to current business. This is... I brought this up earlier. I wanted to get item 28 to be considered before 23. So we will now, I guess, would have a staff report, or do you think one is needed?
Mr. Duffield, I was a little confused. I thought... I understood 28. My recommendation was to continue that, and certainly you can not do that.
That's what it just says here. I'm sorry.
I do think Mr. Piattar mentioned he wanted 25 considered before 23. Do I have that right?
Yeah, that'd be correct. It would be my intent to continue 28 also.
Okay. So do we go to 25? I need a point of order, Mr. Harp. Can you help me?
I think... Oh, go ahead, Eric.
It's really up to you. You basically read the agenda at the beginning of the meeting to say 28 would be next. So if you're going to continue, I want you to consider it and continue it. If you're going to do something else, then probably appropriate to go and take a now since the public was informed to do.
I'll move the continuance of number 28 to the 26th meeting.
I'll second.
All right. Are there any public would like to speak on this item?
So just for the record, item 28 involves the potential ballot initiative regarding certificates of participation. And it was my recommendation in a memo to continue this item to the 26th, and the council is making that motion.
Yes, please.
My name is Susan Skinner, and since I'm going to be out of town for that meeting, I'd like to express my opinion on that right now and really express my concern about the proposed ballot measure to require voter approval before issuing certificates of participation or COPs. It may sound like a really good idea, but it's actually a terrible idea because it ties the hands of future councils and will likely cost the city quite a bit of money. No other city in America does this. A certificate of participation is a bit like arranging a mortgage. Unlike general obligation bonds, the COP debt does not involve an increase in taxes, and by law, payments have to be included in the city budgeting process. Like our own mortgages, a COP is used to pay for something big that the city has decided to finance instead of paying cash for. We've used this only three times in the last 25 years, but we may wish to do so in the near future when we plan to replace our police headquarters. Without a COP, we may be forced to dip into our cash reserves to pay for such a building. If we do this, we would be the only jurisdiction in California, and to my knowledge, the only jurisdiction in all of America who has. If nobody else is doing this, doesn't that give you pause to question why it might not be a good idea? No one knows what the future will bring. There may be a time that a future council is dealing with a substantially smaller cash reserve and an urgent need to replace a building. Removing the COP option reduces the flexibility of future councils in a way that may cost our city quite a bit of money. So let's say it gets passed in the November election. You put it on the ballot, it gets passed, a future building is planned, bids are obtained, but no action can occur until the next election occurs. In an off-year, that might be a year or more unless a special election is called, adding hundreds of thousands of dollars to the cost. A contractor bids a project based on costs today, but if they have to bid a project six to 12 months in advance, they will, of course, increase the bid because of the uncertainty over future costs. You can't hold an election unless you know the cost of the building, so you're going to catch 22 with the end result of higher costs. This is universally considered a bad financial business practice, but the Gang of Four wishes to do it. My understanding is that this has not been vetted by the Finance Committee, nor any independent financial experts. And so I was going to suggest that you more thoroughly research what this action will do to the city and seek to better understand why no one else has done this in any other jurisdiction in our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this item? Please come up.
Denise Oberman, Mayor City Council. I think that it's worthwhile to consider what the benefits are and what the appropriate thresholds and applications are for certificates of participation. I feel like this recommendation is made in reaction to what was previously abuse in the application of certificates of participation by prior administrations. So I don't know whether that was the driver behind this or not, but I do think that there is a role that certificates of participation have. And if the intent is to have better control through an electoral process, there are other ways to accomplish a control. There can be thresholds set. There can be general policy parameters as to what an appropriate application is for CYPs versus something that's subject to voter control. And as to, you know, for example, if there is a need for an emergency response, you know, there can be some policy provision, and there doesn't need to be something that's this unilateral that creates... that creates inflexibility and inability to use this type of instrument in a proper way. So, I think that since that's what the intent was, so I would suggest to go back and take a better look at this and articulate—if there is a need for controls, do it, and just don't have a blanket statement that every single thing's going to go to the electorate. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right. Seeing none, bring it back. I don't see anybody up here wanting to discuss. So, we have a motion in a second. Oh, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Yes, we put this off for a little—about two years now. First, introduce it, vetted it numerous times. Essentially, COPs are way around Prop 13. They have no effect on a budget unless, of course, that budget has a secret plan to use money that's borrowed for a project. Doesn't stop any project from being done. I have faith in the residents and voters of Newport Beach that they have the wisdom and intelligence to make decisions about how their money is spent, especially when it involves borrowing. For that reason, I'm going to vote no on this continuance, and I'll be continuing to support giving the residents of Newport Beach a say in how their own money is spent, especially when it involves large amounts of debt. Thank you.
Anyone else up here? Seeing none? Let's vote. This is on the continuation, yes.
With Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Well, I'm not confident in this, but I'm assuming number 25—item 25 is next.
May I ask a point of order?
Yes.
So, my understanding is the mayor does have the privilege of moving something unilaterally, but if the mayor's not doing that, then it would require a vote of the council. So, that's—I just want to make sure I understand the process right now of moving an item before the budget.
Yeah. No, that is correct. And it was not previously announced that the item would be moved, but the mayor can do it himself, or he can put to a vote of the council.
All right. Let's—I'm doing it. We're moving 25. Wow. Consideration of changing the structure of the Finance Committee. So...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
A brief staff report, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. This request comes to you because you discussed it just two weeks ago at—as an A6 item, sorry, an A1 item. And enough councilmembers wanted to bring this forward. And I'll just briefly say what it is. Today, we have a Finance Committee of seven people. Three of them are you and your colleagues. And then, four are appointed by the mayor. But the person—a councilmember who doesn't serve on the committee gets to select an individual, and the mayor affirms that appointment. So, three councilmembers for non-elected citizens. And then, Mr. Piattar's proposal was to move to a body that was all citizens. So, all seven would be citizens. And I'm happy to take any questions, if you had any, about that issue.
I see Mr. Piattar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm—yeah, I'm happy to elaborate a little bit more. Just like our Finance—just like our Planning Commission and the rest of our commissions in the city, which are all filled with citizen volunteers. Currently, our Finance Committee, as you heard from Mr. Kiff, is made up of kind of a hybrid. We have three councilpeople along with four citizen volunteers. And what I have found on—and, by the way, those four citizen volunteers are appointed by the other four councilmembers that are not on the Finance Committee. Currently, that's made up of Diane Dixon and Will O'Neill and Mr. Muldoon are our current Finance Committee members from the council. And what I find is that—excuse me—that the tendency is for staff to listen to the three councilmembers that are on the Finance Committee and give their voice more weight, because after all, they give recommendations to the City Council. The City Council's going to be voting on it, and there's three people from the City Council sitting there. You know, unlike the Finance Committee—Commission, where we've got a Finance Commission that actually has end decisions that are being made on land use and certain other issues, the Finance Committee only makes recommendations to the City Council. So, by removing the City Council members and making it a seven-member, citizen-volunteer committee, it doesn't change the interaction that the council's got. The council still has final word. The council will still always be making those votes on that. But I think it'll give all of the councilmembers kind of an equal voice, then, on the Finance Committee, rather than right now, you have three councilmembers on there, and the other four get appointed. I think we have a community that is unbelievably exceptional when it comes to financial services and the financial services market and understanding finance. And the talent that we've got in our community, I would have—I would presume that we would have no problem filling it with various—with seven very talented citizens on the committee. I'm also very frustrated on the things that have not been getting done on the Finance Committee. And when we approved the budget last year, I had a request that with our additional payments that are going to CalPERS on the pension payments, that we would look at our own—they call it a Section 115 fund. And we were making these extra payments to CalPERS on a monthly basis. And my request was that it would be evaluated to see if that would be an instrument that we should be using for our—excuse me, our additional pension funds. And I was assured that that would be something that would be handled by the Finance Committee probably by September of that year. And it still hasn't been dealt with. It still hasn't been—something that has been evaluated and/or recommendations have been given to the council. So, on top of the fact that you've got this hybrid committee that doesn't seem to make sense, that diminishes the vote of some of the other councils or the influence, you also have a committee that's not performing and not doing the things that it's been asked to do. And so, I think that the council will be better off having a full citizen committee. And I think the—we will be blessed by the fact that we've got the—this kinds of citizens that have the knowledge and finance that we do. So, we'll have more input, not less input, from the citizenry in that kind of a makeup. So, that would be my proposal. And I would move that we would revise the makeup of the Finance Committee to seven—our seven citizen volunteers, each appointed by a council member accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone want to second that? Well, I don't see any—oh, Mr. Muldoon, please.
Thank you. Having sat on Finance Committee this last year, you learn a little bit about it. It primarily is run by staff. It's a professional operation. The chair has some discretion in what could be put on the agenda, or other members can ask for something to be put on the agenda at later dates. The particular Finance Committee member I have the most respect for is Larry Tucker, simply because he's been active in the city for so long, first on Planning Commission and then now on Finance. And I think Larry expresses it very well when he says, "There are some decisions that just have to be made by those who are accountable to the people directly." And I feel that that's us. That's the City Council. I think we have an excellent sort of compromise right now with the blend of private citizens, who are very knowledgeable in the subject matter, and elected officials, who are accountable directly if they were to do something that does not look out for the best interest of the residents. So, for that reason, Scott, and you've got so much heart in this. It's nothing personal at all. I will be voting against consideration of the change in the finance structure at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Councilmember Muldoon. I actually give credit to Scott for initiating the current system that we have four years ago. It had been just a history. The Finance Committee had been composed of only the three councilmembers that were appointed by the mayor at the time. And Scott introduced in December of '14 or January of '15 to create this hybrid structure. And I actually thoroughly enjoyed as chair of the Finance Committee for the last three and a half years. I think—I agree. I think the public participation of the four public members, the participation, the knowledge, the financial acumen and expertise that we get from our outstanding public members has contributed to a robust engagement of the entire committee. And I, for one, do not think that there's any distinction amongst the seven of us in terms of the discussion and the debate and the topics, because it's—we're a committee of peers on that level. However, having said that, we are—we do have—as elected representatives in a representative form of government, we have a fiduciary responsibility to protect the fiscal house of the city. And that is our responsibility to engage in managing the finances of the city and supporting staff in their implementation of the council's policies and charter requirements. I think this current system is outstanding. And just to make a slight point, we have—we have accomplished a great deal. I think the public has copies of our work plan for the last four years. And we, through the subcommittee structure, Mr. Mayor Protem O'Neill chaired a debt policy review that took several months, good, hard-working months. Similarly, we have a subcommittee working on our reserve policy and how much the city reserves. And a mandatory percentage is determined by council policy. Are we reserving too much or too little? This has been about a seven- or eight-month process for various reasons. And as a result of the reserve policy outcome, which we will be discussing this Thursday at our Finance Committee meeting, the recommendations from our outside consultant and staff, we will determine if we are in a position—a financial position with reserve cash funds that we could create a Section 115 trust. So, we had to complete the reserve study analysis of our reserve funds to determine if we could have enough funds to put into a 115 trust. So, we are very mindful of that possibility and that alternative to invest, so-called invest the city's funds. Having had several meetings on this topic with our outside consultant on pension funding, which, incidentally, that consultant was nominated or suggested to us by one of our public members. And that outside consultant has recommended—informally recommended, we have not taken a vote, that 115 trust may not be the best vehicle for a city of our size to reserve those funds. However, the study is still—the determination is still going forward. We have not closed the door on that. We've just gotten a lot of input. So, your—the citizens of Newport Beach can be assured that their Finance Committee, made up of three councilmembers and four public members, are doing deep dives in the matters that relate to the city's finances. You know, I have gone through a prior council—prior council meeting minutes of our Finance Committee. And 10 years ago, our unfunded pension liability was less than $2 million. So, we have spent more than probably our members really care to delve into the pension issues and how much to prepay, accelerate. We've gone through many analyses, which has really occupied a great many of our meeting work plans, because we're trying to do the right thing in terms of prepaying our unfunded pension liability. These were decisions that prior councils never had to deal with, but we are in a different timeframe. So, our Finance Committee is truly working hard on important issues that affect our general fund and every dollar that is spent and goes into our general fund and out to support the programs and services in our city. So, having said that, I support keeping it as it is, and I do not support making a change. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem O'Neill.
Yeah, this is one of those items that can be really boring to listen to. So, I apologize to the members of the public, but it's a really—it's a—it's a good one to listen to also. I think one of the things I want to just point out is that this is one of those times where you get to see a couple of—a few different options. And frankly, all of them can lead to really great things for the city. I sat on the Finance Committee. I've seen what it looks like. It's really—to Scott's point, it's incumbent upon us, as councilmembers, not to drown out the voices of our citizen members. And if we ever get to the point where we're doing that, we need to be replaced. And then, I received a few emails from folks that seemed to show a little bit of confusion about what the Finance Committee is. And I'd just like to point out for everyone, it is—I mean, it's—it's very open to the public. It is a meeting that gets noticed. Its agenda is placed on the website. You are always more than welcome to come and join, Jim. Probably the only other member of the public who would come. And—but I've got to tell you, we really do discuss a lot of interesting things. And there's been a lot of good policy that's come up through it, just like every other committee, commission, board that we have. There's really good, dedicated folks who serve the community. I like being on it. I enjoy it. I think it's great to see that. I don't—I understand exactly why—I understand why Scott would bring this forward. And I think that—I think ultimately, it really is incumbent upon the councilmembers who are on there to make sure that those fears aren't realized. And again, if—if those fears are being realized, we should—we should be taken off. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Yeah. I don't doubt that, as Scott has said, that a commission of all citizens could do a great job on the Finance Committee. We've got—as he said, there's a lot of horsepower in this town. And of course, our citizens that are currently on the Finance Committee demonstrate that. So, my only issue with it is I strongly believe that, as elected, it's our biggest duty is to protect the financial health of the city, which affects all the rest of the departments and everything that goes on. And I think the way it's currently comprised achieves that for the public. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to make a comment. So, I understand what Scott's up—to, and I respect it, because I was on the Harbor Commission for 10 years. 99% of it, we did not have any councilmembers at all show up or anything. And then, Nancy Gardner decided to help us out. And she came for a couple of years, I would think. And it did affect me in a positive way. And she wasn't intimidating at all, but it just—it just—you know, when you're a volunteer, you're not an elected official, you tend to—you know, have great respect for those. And you just—well, I didn't clam up or anything, but it definitely affected my talking, if you will, or thinking outside the box, because she was a realist. And whenever I'd go too far afield, which I do, she would reel me in. And good for her. It was—it was helpful not to waste time on that. My appointee, Bill—Mr. Calpe, gets along very well with our three councilmen that are on the committee—councilpeople, sorry. And, you know, he—his recommendation to me is that he would like to see it stay as it is. He thinks they have good—he's not intimidated like I was. He's—he holds the line. But—so, for that reason, you know, I fully respect where Scott's coming from. And maybe a year from now or two, we could relook at it. I think also, we had—our election was a little bit tough for the issue at hand that was about a lot of spending. And so, I think having these three councilpeople involved in this part of the world for the city helps kind of tone that down in the past, that we—people had suspect and thought of this or that. You know, you kind of squelch the rumors, and that's important right now. So, like I said, maybe later, it might work out. But I think at this point, since my appointee is getting along and— but again, Scott, I fully understand what you're saying because of what I just said. So, we will now go—oh, Mr. O'Neill, sorry.
Just real quick, since there was no second on that, I'll make a different motion. The motion would be to maintain the Finance Committee as is.
All right. Seeing no speakers up here, we'll take it out to the public. Would anyone like to speak on this item, please?
Mr. Carl Cassidy, resident of Newport Beach, regular attendee at the Finance Committee, probably more than anybody here. And I'd like to affirm what you have to say, Mr. Piattar. You're—you're my representative. And thank you that you would try to make sure that everybody in your district is equally represented. I would appeal to Mr. Hurdman and Mr.—thank you once again, Mr. Piattar, councilman. I would appear specifically to Mr. Avery and Mr. Hurdman. And I would suggest that you're—you get—you also have an equal representation at the Finance Committee. Okay? I can tell you, having attended—it—with all due respect to Ms. Dixon, having attended probably more meetings than Mr. Muldoon and Mr. O'Neill put together, that it is somewhat intimidating, as Mr. Duffield suggested, to have councilmembers there. intimidating, as Mr. Duffield suggested, to have council members there with an unequal vote. Mr. Scott, Councilmember Piattar brought the program of bringing in talent like Larry Tucker, your second nominee, not Jack Wu, but your second nominee.
Who knew? Boy, you already knew.
Well, I think if you'd have talked to me, you might have known.
You should have called the police.
What's that?
Nothing.
All right. Okay. So, let's stay on point. Let's keep our eye on the ball.
Please.
We have, we have one council member here who's suggested that he's not getting equal representation at this committee. Okay? With all due respect to Ms. Dixon's corporate experience, okay, at Avery, any other member who comes to that committee has been duly vetted and their finance acumen reviewed and looked at by the entire committee. They are not there by virtue of being on the council. Okay? So, when you, when you allow special consideration and special voice, okay, to council members at the meeting, it's not in the best interest of the public. It would be somewhat duplicitous if we didn't look back to what Mr. Muldoon is saying. We get excellent input from Larry Tucker. We get excellent input, Mayor Duffield, from your nominee. We don't get, do we get the same just because the council decides to go and do the job themselves? Do you paint your own house? Do your own plumbing? Okay? I, you know, we have an election coming up. We have, and so, I think Mr. Piattar is representing my district very well. I would invite this panel of esteemed council members to give this more careful consideration. We would have given more careful consideration with the initial nominee. This is not something to blow past. This was his idea to start with. It was an excellent idea. Let's take it to the next step. Same as the planning commission, same as the harbor commission. Let's have citizen participation, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon and members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner. What did I just say? Muldoon again.
Okay, it's all right.
I did that again.
It's all right.
I did that again.
I don't, that's fine.
I love it, so it's fine.
I am so sorry.
I don't care, so it's fine.
I'm going to call you just Duffy. That's a whole lot easier.
That works.
I know. You said you're just Duffy. Anyway, now you've got me all rattled, but I'm sorry I did that, but thanks for pointing it out. I actually came here tonight to encourage you to do what you look like you're getting ready to do, and that is to keep the committee the way it is now. I totally disagree with my friend who just spoke to you, but I think that what we have now, we have at least three council persons who are fully engrossed in how, what the financial situation is, and others having the opportunity to learn that too. And that is a good system. It's worked really well for all the other committees, I'm sure. And I think that you need to be thanked for what you have done. You do a great job. The city is doing really well financially. Give a lot of credit to the committee. I think it, the old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, you know? So, I also want to say that I've learned on the committee meeting that my husband and I go to regularly, the one on water quality, his name I never can remember once it got changed to the Thailand's whatever committee, Mayor Duffield, you've been on it, Councilman Avery, Councilwoman Dixon, you all understand that. This is a committee that anybody can come in, and you don't have to be on the committee to be participating with the committee. And I don't know about any of the other committees, but I just think it's excellent. I've never felt intimidated. I've always felt listened to. I was on it officially about 30 years ago, but I stopped being officially a member. So, I am just a guest each time I come. That's the way these things can work. I've been to the finance committee once in my life. It was pretty boring. It was over my head. And so, I'm just so grateful for those of you that are on it. So, I please, I support the motion, I believe, Mayor Protam O'Neil just made, to keep it as is. And thank you for listening. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mom. I don't think anybody could intimidate you as your kid. I can say that, so. Anyhow, my name is Susan Skinner, and I'm here to ask you not to make changes to the composition of the city finance committee. Mr. Piattar is making a proposal to remove city council persons from the finance committee and populate the committee with only residents. And that's a puzzling proposition to me, since it seems like it really behooves the city to have one or more city councilmen on the, on the committee with the intent of gaining a deeper-than-usual understanding of city finances. Wouldn't it be better to keep the city council representatives on the committee? In an increasingly complicated financial world, more knowledge rather than less knowledge seems to me to be the best choice. And I have to say, I think you're going to agree with me this time, and it's rather exciting. So, woo-hoo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, it may seem a little late to be making this comment, but about moving things around on the agenda, I respect the mayor's right to do that under your new policy A1. However, I do feel compelled to point out that this section of the agenda that you moved this item and the last one into, if one looks carefully at the agenda, is Roman numeral 19, which is called "public hearings." And public hearings are rather different than standard agenda items. They usually, the city clerk posts a notice that a public hearing is going to happen 10 days in advance, and these are not really hearing items, so they don't belong at this point in the meeting. That said, I will stand with Mr. Cassidy. I believe Councilman Piattar's idea has considerable merit and is a good one, to have an all-citizens finance committee. The reason for that is I believe it would give the city's finances more scrutiny rather than less because it puts extra eyes on them. An issue going before the finance committee is seen first by that committee, which would formulate and be required to formulate a more systematic written recommendation to you, which then all seven council members with their 14 eyes would be looking at that recommendation and becoming more familiar with the city financial issues than they are now. I see that as a good thing, not a bad thing. And whether it's a good idea or not, I would very much like to know what the four citizens who have been serving on the committee think of the change in the structure. We've heard from Councilman Duffield appropriately or not, what one of those members may be thinking. They are scheduled this Thursday, Councilmember and Chair Dixon pointed out. On their agenda, which came out yesterday, they are going to be discussing this very matter, and I would hope that you would not make a decision on it until you know what the people currently serving on it, what those citizens think of this concept of an all-citizens finance committee. One of them may think it's a bad idea. The other three may think it's a good idea. I would certainly like to hear that. And I also share the concern, because of the kind of informal way this is happening now, that the other four council members are just kind of relying on something having been discussed at the finance committee without a clear report from that. I actually very seldom hear reports of any of the council members here of what happened at the committees that they are on. And so, I'm not sure the communication is happening as well as it would with this alternate structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, Mr. O'Neil.
Sure. Just a couple of quick comments. I have to say, Scott, it's pretty amazing that you brought up an item that has, if anyone has been following any local politics recently, it'd be shocking to follow the fact that we've got some interesting, different perspectives from the public. And she left, but I was going to thank Dr. Skinner for advocating that I stay on the finance committee. So, anyway, what I was going to briefly say, Carl, I appreciate your passion. I think that you've, you really are, you do bring a great perspective when you come in and talk to the finance committee at the, at the public session. And one thing I'll just note is that the finance committee is a bit unique because it's, it is different than the harbor commission, the finance, I'm sorry, the harbor commission and the, I got you, and the planning commission. Thank you. When they make decisions, that can actually get appealed up to the city council and so legally, and there are also charter committees, commissions, so they are going to be a little bit different. The finance committee is a lot more like the airport committee or something along those lines, where you can have a council member on there because what your end goal is, is to take a holistic view of the city, try to put it in and start down that road. And one other thing that I, it pops to my head as we're talking this through is, there are times when a finance committee item will come up and a discussion about why we do certain things with a reserve or why we do certain things with a particular item. We can't, we can't discuss it at the finance committee level because it's a litigation issue or it's a liability issue or something that has been discussed at close session. And there are times when it's important that if, that the committee members can ask a question like that and be able to be assured that that is something that is being reviewed by the council, and it's, it's something that we need to at least be aware that we can't discuss publicly at a, at a finance committee level. There are times when that happens, so it would be helpful to at least have at least one council member on there at some point or another. But, look, I think this is, I think this is one of those items that's a lot of, I enjoy discussing. I appreciate the, everyone's perspectives on this. But, you know, my motion stands, so less further discussion.
All right. Hold on. Mr. Muldoon.
I would just like to add that I take actually pretty seriously that concern you have, Carl, about Mr. Piattar expressing not having representation. I think it's very important. I don't feel that way, but I have no problem with Mr. Piattar taking my seat if he, if he has an interest and feels he's not being represented enough. It is the most exciting commission there is, committee there is, so I'm surprised I'm doing this, but, total joke. But I think Scott is welcome to have a, if he feels like he's not being heard, he's welcome to replace me and have his voice be heard to the max ability that he thinks should be. But I still don't support his second idea. The first idea I love, which is the hybrid idea, which I think should stand.
Mr. Herdman.
Carl, I appreciate your input also, but, you know, I'm just sitting here listening to all this, and I'm thinking, in the year and a half that I've been on council, I have developed some expertise in a couple of areas. And I greatly respect the fact that Councilwoman Dixon, Councilman O'Neil, and Councilman Muldoon next to me have taken the time that they have to develop the expertise that they have in the area of finance in terms of taking care of my fiduciary responsibility, if you will. As a city council person, I can't have expertise in every single area. I don't expect any of them to have developed the expertise that I have, thanks to our city manager, Dave Kiff, when it comes to airport issues. My expertise as far as water quality is very quickly growing as a result of being vice-chair of that committee. And I think they have confidence in me as I do in them representing me and serving on the finance committee. They've expressed their confidence in me as far as my involvement with airport issues, and it's a good balance. I can't, I don't think any of us can spread ourselves that thin in terms of being an expert in every single area of city government. So, I'm going to vote to keep the structure of our finance committee as is. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to make a quick comment. I was, kind of forgot, though. I had appointed our Mayor Protam Will O'Neil after Mr. Wu, so. He was second. He's pretty good. And my third pick was pretty good, too. First one, bad. Okay. All right. That's the end of, well, I would say one last thing I wanted, I did want to comment that I do get regularly phone calls from Mr. Kalpe, who, it doesn't take long, it's a 15, 20-minute thing. He tells me what the high points are, and he keeps me abreast of it and eliminates all the boring stuff. So, I appreciate his reports. All right. We have a motion and a second, and we've heard from the public, so let's please vote.
With Councilmember Piattar voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right. So, that was 25. We're going to go back, I believe, to 23. Item 23, is that correct?
And just brief. Go ahead, Aaron. Sorry. And just briefly, I think it'd probably be best if council members announced conflicts before we get going on this item. And then, if any council members wants to discuss those specific items, then we'll have that council member step out of the room while that item's discussed. And I have a list of all the conflicts, if the council prefer me to read those, if, at your pleasure. Okay. So, in regards to agenda item number 23, fiscal year 2018, 2019, and budget adoption, the first conflict relates to the 800-megahertz system, which is to increase the system backbone cost per county memorandum. Councilmember Muldoon has a conflict related to that matter due to his business interest with the telecommunications industry. The second conflict relates to municipal operations, quarterly steam cleaning of sidewalks on Balboa Island. Councilmember Herdman has a conflict related to that item because he lives within 500 feet of where this occurs. There are two items related to the Park Avenue Bridge replacement, and Councilmember Herdman has a conflict because he lives within 500 feet of those locations. He has a real property interest within 500 feet. There's a street light replacement item that Councilmember Muldoon has a conflict related to due to his business interest. In regards to the Balboa Peninsula crossings, there are various crosswalk enhancements signed and striped on the Balboa Peninsula. Councilmember Avery and, and City Clerk Brown both live with, or both have residence within 500 feet of those locations. And finally, there's an item related to assessment district cost payment for city parcels, assessment district 116, Channel Park, and assessment district 117, Old School and Begonia Parks. And Councilmember Muldoon has a conflict related to those due to his business interest. So, those are all the conflicts, and what I'd urge the councils, if anyone wants to discuss one of those specific items, that you do that first, then the council can recuse themselves and step out of the room.
All right. Mr. Kiff, please.
Thank you, Mayor Duffield and council members. So, this is your final, potentially your final hearing on the budget, the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. And just reminding the public that the council has had study sessions about this, including a joint meeting with the finance committee, and we've spent some good time going through that. Tonight is much shorter because we have done the background, and as the city attorney stated, we're going, we're going to kind of present the checklist to you as an entire document and allow you to, if you wanted to, pull things off of that for a separate vote. And just as a reminder, the budget checklist is kind of a name I've only seen in Newport Beach, and it is amendments that come up, say, between April and today, amendments to the budget that I proposed in April. So, it's, it has a document sometime of, it's a document that includes sometimes items that council members have requested in public sessions and also, but the body of the document are things that Public Works will put in or Finance will put in in part to carryover projects and things like that. So, that's why you will see a lot of detail on this. I'm not going to talk about much of it. So, I'm going to back up for just a second. This is my final budget to present here as your city manager, and I'm very proud of it. It accomplishes a number of things. One, it adds to our school safety efforts. It proposes a new police officer assigned to the high schools. It would be co-funded with Newport Harbor, sorry, with Newport Mesa Unified School District. That commitment is not done yet because the board hasn't voted on it, but Dr. Navarro has assured me that he will push for that and supports it. It also creates a new harbor department, our first, first-ever. It addresses some issues with our jail that I, we, I appreciate the chief's creativity, and that involves ensuring that we have jail matrons on duty at all times. It buttresses our fire prevention efforts with a full-time civilian fire marshal. We haven't had a civilian fire marshal in a long time. We've had fire marshal. We haven't had a civilian fire marshal in a long time. We've had sworn before, but those positions are proposed in there. It also continues the council's very aggressive effort to pay down pensions. And I'll note for the public, I know the council is aware of this, you'll look at the numbers in the budget and see that it grows. Well, it does grow, because very fortunate to Newport, our tax revenues grow. But it doesn't mean that our expenditures on programs go in an equi, grow an equivalent amount. Our expenditures for PERS are really growing, and that's in part because we have to pay it. These are contracts that we can't break. But in part because the council has taken an aggressive step to get ahead of the PERS issue by paying more. And in effect, that saves us, it's, it's like paying off debt at 7%. So this, this budget continues that effort of about $9 million going to pay more than we need to, to PERS. It's balanced, in light of all that. And through hard work with our departments, and it, it has a net zero change in full-time positions compared to where we are right now, today. So we have the harbor department, the new school safety officer, all with no net change in full-time positions. We do increase our part-timers somewhat, but that, that works out well for us, and we can serve the city well. Then I'm going to quickly go through and present the budget checklist to you, just so you know. This document is out there. So again, for folks at home, these are amendments to the proposed budget. I'm not going to stop on anything, they're just making sure we have visibility to it. And then council members also have this in their document. And they can, you can, as a council, call off or discuss any of these separately. So I'll stop right there and, actually, just, I mentioned how we go, stay at 726. It's, it's, some positions go away, and we contract them out, or have no need for them anymore. I do manage this fairly actively, and so you can see how we end up still at 726 from where we are today. The council did add one mid-year, but we're staying flat from where we are today in June. And here's just a snapshot of what it looks like with full-time. Again, we are using some more part-time positions to cover things. For those who are budget readers, you see that as an FTE, or a full-time equivalent. Some dates to, just the, by background, this is who's looked at the budget to this point, as well as the public. And the Finance Committee reviewed this on the 24th, that was the last review, with no position on the CIP or checklist, and Committee Member Gorsuch abstained. So here are recommended actions. And again, if, I'll stop at this slide. If you wanted to go back to the checklist, I'll certainly jump back there. Thank you, Mayor and council members.
Before we get started, I wanted to point out that, you know, to our city manager, Mr. Kiff, wow, how many of these have you done?
Ten as city manager, and then participated in the previous ten, so.
Well, if you had asked me if I had to do that one time, it would just about do me in. I have to say, that is the hundreds and hundreds of line items that you and your staff, Dan and everybody, go through with, with the seriousness that you take it, and, and I was toiling over this. You know, I really have to thank you guys so much, and we all do up here. The word boring is a bad word. It's complicated, it's confusing, and it's really, really important. And I think one of the best attributes you had here as, as our city manager was getting this thing done. You know, when you said it's balanced, I wonder how many cities are like that, when you think about it, as well as being able to do the things that we're doing. All right, let's get to work. You don't need to hear my babble. Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, just a couple of things just worth pointing out. I'll, I'll probably talk about the budget a little bit more later. But we're, since we're, we're talking right now about the checklist, I just want to point out, on the checklist at least, even if we adopted absolutely everything on this checklist, we would still show operations at a net positive, as in revenues would still exceed expenses, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, yeah, I can't help it. I'm going to talk about pensions for a second. I just want to point out that Newport Beach is one of the only cities that I know of that is projecting a decrease in the pension liability in the next year and the year after that. And I can't tell you what a big deal that is, because if you are following all the other cities that are dealing with this issue, one of the things that's going on right now is you're seeing a discount rate drop. And when you have a discount rate drop, that means that you're assuming a lower rate of return, which means you have to contribute more into it to, to get to the point where you had expected in the first place. And so if we had been doing nothing, or at least the base minimum of what we would be billed, we would absolutely be seeing an increase, just like all of our sister cities, just like all the cities that are surrounding us, you're, they're seeing increases. And they're seeing increases such that even a city like Santa Monica right now is facing structural deficits within the next three years. There are a number of cities that are facing structural deficits. And so what you're going to start seeing repeatedly over and over and over again, our, our sales tax increases, transient occupancy tax increases, and they can call them anything they want, they're going to be pension taxes. We have been able to accomplish, as a city, this decrease when everyone else is seeing increases without increasing a single tax inside our city. And that's a real credit to the folks who have been proposing, you know, making these proposals. And that starts in the finance, the finance department. It's, it's complicated. Dan is viewed statewide as someone who really understands this stuff. And I'm sure every other city loves when you tell them that Newport Beach is accomplishing what they're accomplishing, right, Dan, at finance conferences? They just smile and shake your hand and say, congratulations, it's so nice that you're doing that.
I'm not very popular.
So I can't, I can't, I can't go much longer without talking about the budget, without pointing out what a big deal that is. And I think what you're going to see also is that that's a long-term issue. It's a short-term issue, too, because it, it certainly eats into what we've got. But that's a really long-term issue with really big implications for, for everyone in here. And then I think what you're going to also see is, all the short-term services that people would expect to be in a budget are there. You've got, you got your, your public safety, police fire, and lifeguards. I think that all of the expectations there have been met. And I think that we have, we are running on, we're firing on all cylinders. And that's fantastic. And I, I know I'm gonna, if I keep going through every department, I'm gonna miss one, and I apologize. But I just want to point out, that's, that's a really big deal, to be able to say that when we're, when we're hitting on what I think residents are expecting. And then you add on the capital improvement program. And the CIP, but, the CIP is about half the length of the budget, and the budget is about that long, anyway. And so, I know that there are a lot of folks, I know that, I just want to at least point out, Jake Janz was here earlier from the Junior Lifeguard Foundation. He had his two little boys, they were falling asleep on him. So I'll just point out, for anyone who's here and anyone watching, we are funding the plan and opening for the, opening drawings and plans for the Junior Lifeguard building. Once we get that in and have an idea of the cost estimate, I have no doubt that there will be a partnership between the city and the Junior Lifeguard Foundation, or at least some foundation similar to that, to get the money for that. There's also funding in, in this for the, the library to start at least doing the exact same thing for a lecture hall next door. There's a lot to liken this. And there's also a lot of caution. Anytime you're dealing with municipal finances, you've got to deal with that caution. So there's been a ton of work done at the Finance Committee level, way more work done at the staff level, and getting to vote on this tonight, honestly, the wonk in me is so happy. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dixon.
Okay, well, not to repeat all the wonderful words and observations that Mayor Pro Tem said, I certainly echo them. But just to add a little bit more context as well, as noted by Mr. Kiff, the Finance Committee was hard at work this year, as it has been every year. So we met specifically and exclusively on the budget four times in a Finance Committee meeting, and then one more time as a joint meeting with the city council. So there's been a thorough deep dive into every aspect of the, the city's spending. Every year, we look at, do a deeper dive on specific departments. We looked at the fire and police departments this year. And is, and it's not a roadshow or a show and tell, it is really looking at how expenditures are trending. Also, what we are doing at the Finance Committee, and staff certainly is leading this, is creating greater visibility to all interested parties who want to look at our budget process on the city website. And we do have a user-friendly day, Dan, what's it called? The, the-
It's an interactive budget portal. The software company is Socrata.
Socrata, okay. An interactive budget, oh, there's Steve out there, as Steve designed it. Very user-friendly, even Mr. Mosier, I think you've used it and referred to it in the past. So you could really cross-fertilize a lot of different numbers and see how the impact is. Because the net impact for the last four years, including this year, so the last four years, and in June, our expenditures for the last four years have, excluding extraordinary pension, because as we've all stated, we are paying more than we are legally required to. Spending has grown 4.16% over the last four years, while revenues have grown 5.5%. So we are out raising revenues through, not taxes, but through the appreciation of our property values, which goes to the state, which comes back, 16% of our, your property taxes come back to our city, as do 1% of your sales taxes come back to our city. As Mr. O'Neill mentioned, many cities, I think there were over, I want to say, over 300 cities did have done sales tax increases over the last couple of years. We see no, no forecast of that in our future. So we're, we're taking the money that you pay through your property and sales tax, and the TOT, that brings in significant, about $28 million a year, of those who stay in our hotels of visitors, is a significant part of our revenue. And that is what funds our essential programs and services. This past, this budget that we're voting on tonight represents a spending increase of 1.3%. Inflation has been about 3, CPI has grown about 4% over the last 12 months. A net of inflation, the real rate of our annual spending amounts to negative 2.6%. So we're headed in the right direction without compromising the delivering of our safety services and programs, as well as overall programs to enhance and maintain and enhance our quality of life, unique to Newport Beach. So the staff is, we're running a lean and mean, but we're delivering the quality services. Lean and mean is kind of a corporate term, and I'm, I'm used to that kind of environment. And I'm proud to say that we are, with what Mr. Kiff has created, no headcount, every year we say, no new headcount, and there has been no new headcount of full-time positions. And you have found it in ways which mean, I think the staff's going to be working a little pressure to the metal here, to really deliver on the outstanding level of service that they provide. And we're very grateful for that. So I also want to take a moment and thank the Finance Committee and the public members, as well as the council members. Hard work, meeting two times a month since January through this budget session, and it is a hard-working committee. And we, meetings, for those of you who are standing in line to come to our Finance Committee, allow about two or two and a half hours per meeting, because we do get into these juicy topics. And it is a wonderful experience to maintain and stabilize and guide our future city spending, and looking, looking at our revenue picture. There are, are some little headwinds on sales tax going forward, just because of online spending and, and tax revenues that come back from that. But I want to thank the Finance Committee, thank staff, and thank our community for, for caring so much about our community and supporting all of us in how we try to do the right thing to continue to make our community fiscally strong. And I'm proud to say that it is. And I want to thank Mr. Muldoon and Mr. O'Neill for sharing the Finance Committee duties, and laying out the action plan for the year, and completing those responsibilities. Mr. O'Neill headed up the debt policy, did a fine job, and we're finishing up on the reserve policy. So a lot of good deep dive. So, thank you very much. Job well done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Piotr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is still a working meeting, right? We're able to suggest changes to the budget. With all the congratulations, I got a little confused. Dan, can you tell us on the, on CalPERS, we're funding an additional, is it 8.8 million, is the projection for this year?
Yeah, it's, the additional discretionary payment is 8.8 million. But also keep in mind that we have fresh started several times. So if you were to strip out those fresh starts, we're really paying probably closer to 20 million a year more than perhaps other cities.
So the, the fresh start, the first one we, the only one that I know of is the one that we did in 2014, where we added an additional 9 million or whatever.
Right, so-
Has there been any others since then?
Prior, prior to that, there were a couple of fresh starts, yes.
Okay. And so just for you in the audience, fresh start means is that you go to your mortgage pay, your mortgage banker, and you're paying in your mortgage, we're doing it to CalPERS, and you say, gee, I'd like to make a bigger payment. And the guy goes, sure, no problem, make a bigger payment. Of course, next month, if you want to decide, hey, things are tight, I don't want to pay that extra payment, you're screwed. You still have to pay the higher payment because you've made this fresh start. And there isn't a two-way street on this, it's a one-way street commitment. So the city's made a one-way street commitment on 12 grand, or 12 million a year, over and above what our minimum was. So now our new minimum payment is 12 million more. But what we're talking about doing here is 8.8 million, and this is not a fresh start, it is a voluntary additional payment that we're going to be making every month.
Correct.
And it's about 8.8 million, a little less than 9 million.
Annual cost.
Annual cost.
We don't make the same amount, yeah, correct.
Annual cost. So however that is, divided by 12.
Right.
Okay. Last year, the promise to me was, is that we would be evaluating a 115 fund. A 115 fund is basically a fund that we control that is for pensions only. And the idea behind that is, is that you put money into the 115 fund, and then you can distribute that to CalPERS or other causes. We have an existing 115 fund for our retiree medical benefits, our legacy retiree medical benefits. So this would be an additional 115 fund that, as Ms. Dixon talked about earlier, that could be used as a potential depository for some of our reserves. The intent last year was that we had evaluated to see if we wanted to put this additional payment, this 8.8 million that we're making this year, into a 115 rather than to CalPERS, the idea being that we wouldn't want all of our eggs in one basket. So you're, you're keeping some of your retirement money in a, a different fund than just CalPERS fund. And the fund would be managed by PARs, or PFM, or whoever we decided that would manage that fund. The Finance Committee has not come up with a resolution, has not studied that completely, has not made a recommendation to the council. And I guess my question is, is, you know, fool me once, fine, shame on you, shame on me. Fool me twice, shame on me. Either way, I cannot support this 8.8 million going to CalPERS. But I do want to make the extra payments for our, for the pensions. So my recommendation would be to put this money into a reserve fund designated for CalPERS and for retirement, and that it would not go to CalPERS until after the evaluation of the 115 fund. And the 115 fund would be, I mean, if this, if the Finance Committee and the city council decided we don't want a 115 fund, we want to continue to put it in CalPERS, then the money from that reserve would go to CalPERS. But I would ask that it would be kept away. Once you give it to CalPERS, you don't get it back. And, and I think we just want the opportunity to evaluate whether we should do that. There are a lot of large, medium cities and other agencies that have established 115 funds as a very useful tool as part of their overall reserve and pension functions. And I don't think the, the committee has procrastinated and not done its job, in my opinion. And I agreed to it last time, thinking, oh, it's only a couple of months, we'll have a couple of months' payments that would go into CalPERS. But then after that, we would evaluate it. Dan, can you tell us what our funding level is currently with CalPERS on our pension plan? Are we 90% funded? Are we 40% funded? What are we at?
I believe we're about 68% funded, both, both plans, between both plans.
And what is the average of the CalPERS funds? What are most cities' average?
I think that's pretty close to the statewide average.
So as we start to pay extra, now we're going to start to inch above what the average is for CalPERS, as far as the percentage funding of our plan?
That would be the goal?
Well, the goal is to fund our retirement plan. Whether you want to be overfunded compared to everybody else or not is a, is a financial decision, and has to do with risk, has to do with, do you want all your eggs in one basket? This is another reason why I would encourage the council to consider the 115 fund, or at least hold in reserves- least hold in reserves until we do analyze it with the actuary. For those of you that follow Senator Morlock, Senator Morlock has done an evaluation of the different cities. There's 482 cities in the state of California. And he evaluated the debt compared to the unencumbered reserves on a per capita basis in the state. So out of the 482 cities, Newport Beach came in 434th. We are not even close to being par, much less being at the top of the state like this city ought to be. Now, I will criticize Morlock's rating or ranking system, because he doesn't take into consideration a city's ability to pay. And we are very blessed, and we have the ability to meet our debt requirements. Our debt requirements mostly are this project, this building that we're sitting in, and the $130 million of debt that we took on, as well as our unfunded pension liabilities, which we're trying to pay down. So, you know, we're aggressively going after paying down that debt, and we have the ability to do it. Like I said, Morlock's rankings didn't take that into consideration. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make that amendment to this. So I'm not sure if you want to make a motion to approve the staff report as-is for the budget, and then have things like this be proposed amendments that we would vote on, or how you want to handle it from a voting point of view. I'm happy to make a, a motion to approve the budget with the caveat that our, our extra $8.8 million payments go into a reserve for pensions and be distributed per the Finance Committee and City Council's recommendations after they study their 115 fund.
All right, thank you. Aaron?
I think it'd best to straw vote these type of items and see whether or not there's support for it, and then we can figure out.
I don't think that's the best way to do it at all.
Okay. All right. That's my recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make a recommendation. So perhaps what we could do is, at some point, we would be able to conduct a straw vote as to the checklist items, if anyone would like to pull any of those off. And then we can make a motion as to the budget, which I believe at that point could be made with or without the modification that Mr. Piattar made. It probably would make sense to go out to public before any such motion would be made, though.
Right. So, anyone up here would like to?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more, one more comment. Is the intent to go over the checklist item by item tonight, or only for those people who have questions or changes?
I believe just questions and changes.
I have, I have one comment to Mr. Kiff, and that is, I know it hasn't come back to the council yet, but my proposal to add additional permanent airport noise monitors that we would control and use, I just want to make sure that that's included in the budget, and I don't remember it being in the main budget, and I checked on the checklist, it's not there, so.
Your, your point is, is taken. I was going to try to cover that in the existing budget, because it's not that big a dollar item for two of them.
I just, I just want to make sure it's accounted for.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
I, I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just want to point out for everyone real quickly, the, the study that Mr. Piattar is referencing that came out of Senator Morlock's office, he, he mentioned one thing it didn't take into consideration. Another thing it didn't take into consideration is whether a city is full-service or not. And that makes a big difference, because let's take the city of Elise Viejo, which is a great city. They do not have their own police department, they don't have their own fire department, they don't have lifeguards, because they're not in the ocean. And so what they do is they contract out with Orange County Fire Authority, which doesn't recover, doesn't receive money from the city, it receives money through tax, the property tax assessments. So you won't see it as a citizen going through your city, you'll see it going through the property taxes, and you would know that if you lived in Irvine, Mission Viejo, all these other cities, where you'll see that on your property tax bill. So that's number one. Number two is, they also contract out with the Orange County Sheriff. The reason it's really important to recognize both of those things is because both the Sheriff's Department and the, and OCFA have enormous unfunded pension liabilities. And what happens is, through the contracts that are entered into by these, the city for the sheriff, and then also for the OCFA, those pension costs are passed down. Now, how much, there's an enormous dispute. I will tell you right now, if you try to read into it, there, there are a lot of cities trying to push back on a whole bunch of things. Irvine is at odds with the OCFA, Mission Viejo is, is at odds with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. And the biggest reason for these things is the cost. Where are the costs coming from? How are they being paid? Where do they come from? So if you're a city, coming back to Elise Viejo, where you don't pay anything as a city into fire prevention, and then you, I believe, I'm pretty sure, but I'm not 100%, but I think so. But then their sheriff, when you're paying sheriff, I was just talking to their mayor six months ago, a year ago, and I asked him, what percentage of your budget is the sheriff? And he said, we're approaching 50%. They're approaching 50% of their budget going to the Sheriff's Department for police. We are under 30% as a city right now, even with the fresh start, and even with the amount that we're paying in. So it's really important to put everything in context, because I really respect Senator Morlock. I just thought that study was so far off-base when it came to a city like ours, not to mention the differences between our unfunded pension liability that are on our books, but not comparing that to cities where they're off-book but they're paying for it. Thank you.
All right. So, well, go ahead. Sorry.
Just want to add to Mayor Potem O'Neal's statements. The other thing that I think is very important for the analysis that Mr. Piattar was citing is that we are sort of a legacy city, city. Over 100 years old, we have employees who've been working for the city, and I like to quote Dave Kiff on this, people are living longer, and that's a good thing. But at the same time, our liabilities are extending much longer than these cities in South Orange County or throughout the entire state that are relatively new. They're not only contracting out their services, as Mayor Potem O'Neal said, but they're also looking at a lot less legacy expenses, which is why it's so important that we watch full-time headcount, which also brings back to Mr. Kiff, thank you very much for listening to me at the study session with that concern. Because the full-time headcount, how many people are on pension system for years to come, is going to impact councils and the city for generations to come. So I understand Councilman Piattar's point, and there's debate about these trust accounts, whether or not they're effective. You do lose the advantage of paying CalPERS as quickly as possible, they sort of reward you for paying them. But at the same time, it does feel like it's a little bit of a, of a bottomless pit. Well, that's because in some part, it's a moving target, and that's because CalPERS has not done a very good job of investing the taxpayers' funds. They've made this fund very political to get their own agenda, rather than following their fiduciary duty and trying to get the best and highest return for the taxpayers. So that's, we covered a lot. We could talk about transconstatiation and other, other issues later. I think that's, that's all we've got for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Just to make it clear, I wonder if I should just go councilperson by councilperson and just ask them. So I'll start with Mr. Avery. Do you have anything on the checklist you'd like to change, delete, move around, discuss?
No.
Mr. Piattar.
I already mentioned.
We already mentioned. Mrs. Dixon?
Just one clarifying question on the community development, life safety, is that the fire marshal position, the three-quarter?
That is not. That is to, to address a contract position concern that I've spoken with folks about. Civilian fire marshal is in the base budget.
Oh, it's not, not a checklist item?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I have no questions. Thank you.
All righty. Mr. Herdman, do you have any questions?
I have none.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon?
No, but just for those in the audience, especially your parents, we are agreeing to fund with the school department, extra police officer in this budget, correct, Mr. Kiff?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And Mayor Potem O'Neal?
I have none. Thank you.
All righty.
Mr. Duffield, before you go further, Dave Webb was sharper eyes than mine in answering Councilmember Piattar's question about the sound monitoring. It is in the base CIP for the coming year, $40,000 on the page that shows miscellaneous. So that would allow us to do two, because I think our price tag is about $20,000 apiece. And I envisioned trying to put one on the island and one on the peninsula. I apologize. Dave, do you remember what page that is exactly?
No, it's in the miscellaneous.
Okay. It's in the CIP, again, base CIP.
All right. So I think we're done up here. So I'd like to take it out to the public, please. Open the public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to come up and speak on this item? A big item, a lot of items.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Joy Brenner. I have a couple of personal comments before I address you as the President of the Corredama Residence Association. But first of all, I wanted to say to Duffy, you make us laugh, and isn't that nice for a change? So, we really appreciate you being real. So I wanted to say that. I also wanted to say something about during the study session, when you did the presentation about the undergrounding, that was excellent. And the cooperation between the citizens and the staff, and even, and the council, and even Southern California Edison was very impressive. And it's nice to know that everybody's keeping such a close eye on how things are done in our city. So I wanted to say that. Now, as President of the Residence Association, at the last meeting on the study session on the budget, I was concerned about a couple of items that looked like they were possibly in jeopardy, which was the school safety officer and the fire marshal position. And I'm very pleased tonight to say, it looks like those are both going to be funded. And I'd like to thank Dave Kiff for that. From what I've seen today, it looks like he's created like nine and a half positions out of nothing. So I think that's pretty remarkable, and I can't understand how it happens, but that fire marshal position, as you know, the Residence Association sent a letter in in support of that. It came to us from our residents, especially people living on Butt Gully, talking about the importance of the fire marshal position and the prevention. And we all know that in a community like ours, fires hopscotch. And so just because all of us are not living right on Butt Gully or in other wildfire areas, it doesn't mean that we're not in jeopardy. So that became an issue that was very important to our board. That's when we sent in the letter to you requesting that that position be funded. And so because we thought it was in jeopardy, we wanted to come tonight to make sure that you understood how important that is to our community. And in fact, we brought one of our longtime members, Bruce Beardsley, who was a former captain with the LA County Fire Department, who was prepared to talk, if you think it's necessary, about the importance of having that fire marshal position fully staffed. And we also have some other members who were here to talk about why that is so important to us as a community. So I don't know if it's necessary for us to do that this evening, because it looks like things are moving forward in both of those areas. And I'd like to thank you for all looking at those issues so carefully, and especially for Dave, for making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Next speaker, please. Anyone else like to come up and?
Just for the record, when she mentioned undergrounding, I excuse myself for business purposes, because it involves funding involved with infrastructure, wireless telecommunications. Thanks.
Great. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Kobiyashi, and I just wanted to thank you for including the additional school resource officer. And you can bet I will be pounding on the school board to make sure they cough up the other half of it. Thank you very much.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else?
Carl Cassidy, resident. I, I want to be real clear. I think the Finance Committee is doing an amazing job, without, without the passion, with the civility, the alacrity with which the council members and the individuals that are citizens are on the committee, it's amazing. What, and, and with Dan's help and Dave has done, it's, it's in well, well-placed hands. That said, I, Newport Beach, Mr. Piattar, Councilmember Prober, is unique. It's, you, you have to go to Washington State to find a, a back bay like we've got. There's, we have a harbor, we have a major shopping center. So to affirm what Mr. O'Neal had to say, and what Mr. Muldoon had to say, it's, it's unique. Any study that Mr. Morlock might do, or anybody else, there's not, there's, you really can't compare it. And, and the experts that are brought in, the actuary, is outstanding. And, and it's a difficult, the math is not lineal math, it's, it's a geometric progression. And the, the fact that Mr. O'Neal, Mr. Old Muldoon, and the, and the citizens grasp this is truly amazing. They have, the numbers that come out of PERS, they focused on, on the material, the salient issue, the, the pension liability. We can, they look carefully every year at whether to pay some ahead, and it's a major discussion, and it's, and it's well, well-vetted, and, and it's hard to predict what interest rates are going to be in the future. And they, they look carefully at it, and the people, and, and, you know, I would invite people from the public to come for their own investment portfolios, because the advice that, that is brought in there, and, and you get, you get pretty good investment advice, because the city's looking at a prediction about what's going to happen in the future with interest rates. And it's free to get, to get the benefit of what the city's getting. So it, the, the purse thing, Mr. Piattar, is tough, because as I pointed out to, to Dave, early on, four or five years ago, when, when, when the state gives you your PERS number, they're already a year to two years old. So it's tough. And these, and these people are doing an outstanding job predicting. And if they're telling you that to do what's equivalent to a fresh start, it's been carefully vetted, and it's a pretty good guess. And they're watching after the employees of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm glad you go. You're, you're great. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. The budget process is undoubtedly an intricate and difficult one, complicated. The City Council last saw this on May 22nd at a study session. They saw the published budget, they saw the checklist, which is the corrections to the public, published budget. The minutes of that meeting don't actually reflect any changes to the checklist. And the current staff report that you have of today's date, the actual hearing on the budget, doesn't mention any changes were made. Yet I have to point out to you that the checklist tonight is not the same as the checklist that you saw three weeks ago. Three weeks ago, there was an item here where a firefighter was going to be changed to a firefighter paramedic in Costa Corona del Mar. That was $49,000. That is not on the checklist tonight. On the checklist tonight, there is a mobile data computer equipment upgrade for fire vehicles, $291,000 that was not on the list when you saw it three weeks ago. Very mysteriously to me, on the list that you saw three weeks ago, there were going to be three community service officer positions opened at a cost of $225,000. Tonight, there's only two of those community service officers, one full-time, one part-time, but the price is exactly the same. So I don't know if that's a misprint, why, why are we getting two for the same cost that used to be three last year? Why are none of the changes, or why they came about, or who requested them, indicated in the staff report? They bother me, but we live in an imperfect world, so I guess it's the best we can do. The real thing that bothers me about the budget, and, and I'm sure the city manager will be happy that this is the last budget I comment on, because I've probably made the same comment for the last nine or 10 years that he has been the city manager, there, there is a certain opacity to this process. The items that are in the CIP budget, like the noise monitors, which turn out to be Project 19M11 on page 84, are clearly spelled out what the money is being budgeted for, but the rest of the budget, unless it's on the checklist, is really hard to find. If you just look at the checklist, we know you're approving $150,000 for a harbor department workboat, but if that was in the main budget, it would just be in some line item equipment or something like that. You would not know what that amount is being approved for. And in addition to the noise monitors, there's presumably a lot of other money that the city manager realizes in the budget as intended for John Wayne Airport issue actions, but they're not part of the CIP. You can't tell in the budget where they are. My time is running out, so I will just say, with a new city manager coming on, I'm really concerned that that institutional knowledge of what the budget is for is not clear to the public, and I don't know whether it's going to be clear to the new city manager what these line items are for. In the checklist, you see what the money is being allocated for, in the budget, you don't. And I, I assume it's in writing somewhere, or it's in the city manager's head, or it's in the finance director's head. But I, after 10 years, I still don't know where those specific allocations are and how we know what you're approving tonight. know what you're approving tonight in detail. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right, I'll bring it back. Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Well, just going to make a motion, but with Mr. Piattar needing to step out for just a moment, it probably makes sense to just wait for full council before I make a motion.
While you do that, I might just take an opportunity to thank some people like I did last time. And Jim should be, rest assured that as long as Susan or Dan here, whatever's in my head is also in their head. But I do think there's always progress that can be made on the budget. The interactive budget portal is a start, and I'm with Jim on this one. I think we could be much more clear about where those things go, and that would be a really cool thing for the Finance Committee maybe to work on. Anyway, let me conclude just by thanking the finance team, Dan, Steve, Susan, Shannon. I mean, these people put in all the work, and I very much appreciate all their wisdom. Lots of changes at the end. They're not nefarious changes, they're just projects that are wrapping up or not wrapping up. And I do make a lot of changes there about with personnel, just in the last two weeks, because I'm trying to make sure this budget reflects what I believe the council's wishes are versus just my own. So that's a lot of those changes, because it really is the council's budget ultimately that gets voted on. Sorry, it becomes the council's budget that's voted on. So with that, I'll certainly conclude and thank each of you for your questions that you've had of me and the input that you've given to me independently.
Thank you, Dave. Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Sure. So one quick note is that if Ruth is going to the school board to make sure that we get half that money, I'm confident, Dave, we're going to get half that money. So thanks, Ruth. The, so I will move staff recommendation.
I second.
All right, let's vote, please. No. Did you?
So I would like to propose a, an amendment to that, that the money for the extra payments to CalPERS be held in reserve until the Finance Committee's done with their evaluation of a 115 fund.
I'll note that's not a, not a friendly amendment for me. So if that's a substitute motion?
It's not a, it's not a substitute motion, it's an amendment to the motion.
Got it. So it's a motion to amend.
And there's no second, so it dies. So it'll be, I will not be able to support this budget. That is a big deal. I don't believe you should put all of your eggs in one basket, and I can't support it. Thanks.
All righty. Please vote.
With Councilmember Piattar voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and get started here. Item 24?
That's right, Mr. Mayor. Better than I could have done there. Keep all this. I will offer you the chance of a staff report or not a staff report. This is a big dollar item. It's been, this is a, for the public's satisfaction, this is our parking management program, where we have an independent contractor, and have had that for probably six, seven years. It used to be an in-house service, and now it's done by the private sector. They do our meters, our lots, some of our citations. I call it a little KGB car that runs around that does license plate recognition. So we could tell you more about the process if you'd like or not.
I don't see any.
Just questions.
Sure.
From what I understand, this, the recipients of the suggested award is not the high, is not necessarily the least expensive, but they have the most opportunity for revenue. Could you explain that? Or first thing, tell me, where does it rank in the level of cost?
So, try to get organized here. Do you want to turn to factor?
The party for recommended award that you see on the slide here is Ameripark, and you'll see them kind of thirt over in position. And what you see on this table here is the proposed year-one cost, as well as the five-year not-to-exceed cost. We did five years to line it up with the term of the proposed contract. So, you know, I'm going to give you your answer here in a bit of a layer. So the first part of the answer is that the cost we received originally slotted Ameripark at roughly $6.894 million over the five-year term. The other highlighted portion you see here is cost from SP Plus, highlighted because they were the lowest cost, to give you the comparison there. Now, it should be noted that after we identified Ameripark as the highest qualified firm from the RFP process, we did enter into negotiations directly with Ameripark, and as a result of that, they were able to reduce their five-year costs by approximately $250,000. And so that is why the amount you see here is different than the amount that is on the proposed agreement there, because we were able to get that down a little bit. There is still a little bit of a discrepancy, or a disparity between Ameripark and what the lowest cost is, but there is some value to be had there, because that extra, or that disparity, I should say, consists of almost 0.5 FTE and higher employee wages overall. And we translate that to mean higher retention for their employees, increased customer service, and so forth for the parking management enforcement services.
So could you just tell those who, are there any other reasons you thought that they were exceptional?
Yes, I believe when the panel was going through their proposal and after the interviews, they provided an exceptional customer service plan. Their employee retention plans were very impressive. Their training programs were very impressive. They, for example, they proposed a 24-hour call center, and complaints on the current contractor not picking up phone calls was an issue. They're very familiar with our infrastructure. They have a great deal of expertise throughout the nation, and I believe that that's why they were selected.
So I imagine it would be unenjoyable to deal with the KGB, correct? Similarly, it'd be unenjoyable to deal with parking tickets or those sort of situations. So essentially, what you're saying is better customer service, better service to the residents and visitors who do unfortunately have to deal with them at times, and essentially, an overall better fit, which is why you're asking us to vote or support the proposal that's not necessarily the least expensive. Thank you.
All right. Just so long as you don't take our parking passes away from us. Please. Or maybe we should give them back. Okay. I don't see any other speakers up here, so I'd like to take it out to public comment on this item. Would anyone like to speak on it? Seeing none, bring it back.
I move staff recommendation.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Okay. All right, next item, 26. Approval of an award of agreement with SandCon Technologies.
Staff report is available if you'd like one.
I don't see any up here. And I don't see any comments. I'll take it out to public. Anyone like to speak on this item, please?
I'll move staff recommendation.
All right, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously 7-0.
All right. Item 27.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think this is your last item of the evening, and this was a, another item that Mr. Piattar sent through the A1 process. It involves support for House Bill 5724. This is authored by Congressmember Rohrbacher. It relates to group residential uses. And I can go into more detail if you'd like. You have a couple of choices, because this is not purely reflective of the legislative platform. And real quickly for the public, the council has had for the, for several years, a legislative platform that if something is consistent with it, the mayor can send a letter without taking that to council. But there's just one little aspect of this bill that's not consistent. So therefore, I brought it to you as an, as item 27.
All right. Any comments up here? Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yeah, I'll just make a real quick comment. I, I thought that the staff report on this one nailed it. I would not like to take any kind of position dealing with the health insurance laws. It's, so it's, that one, that part of this is pretty far outside our purview, but I can, I can understand supporting the staff recommendations A and C, but I'll wait until public comment.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Dixon?
Actually, I concur exactly with what Mayor Protem said. I don't think we should get, get into the health insurance aspects, but in terms of the residential aspects, designation aspects of locations of the placement of the facilities, I support that portion of the bill. So we'll see what others say. I agree.
You sound like you're running out of gas. What time is it? Oh, that's because it's 9:30. All right. Okay. Well, seeing no one up here, nothing up here, like to go out to public. Anyone in the public like to speak on this?
My name is Ruth Kobiyashi, and I concur about the insurance aspect, putting that aside. I'd like to respectfully urge you to take a position supporting the Restoring Community Oversight of Sober Living Homes Act of 2018. As you know, cities have been negatively impacted by the proliferation of these facilities with little say in the matter and little ability to regulate them. Many operators have become brokers of drug addicts, luring them and even paying them to come to our beach communities from all over the country. What they do from there is often nightmarish. While we respect the need for reputable, regulated, accountable facilities, we also insist that cities have the ability to regulate their locations and provide appropriate oversight to protect our communities. That's all I'd like to say on that. And then also, you know what? I just realized my other comments are not related to that, so I'll just send them in an email. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I concur with the position that Councilmember Dixon has taken, and also the comments from Ruth. Thank you. Very important for our community. We had a lot of issues historically, and it was a lot of, very important to regulate and assure the responsible placement and, and management of these types of facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Mr. O'Neill?
I move staff recommendation A and C.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members to vote with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.